All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting for Wednesday, September 3, 2014. With that, can I get a roll call, please?
Chairman Jennifer Whitman.
Here.
Vice Chairman Joshua Ailer.
Here.
Commissioner David Blazer.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Bloomfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Bridget Peters, no. Commissioner Christopher Sippel.
Present.
Commissioner Brent Moody.
Here.
All right, with that, can I get an approval of the agenda, Vice Chairman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Sippel. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Communications from Citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters not on the agenda. The commission's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Do we have anybody here wishing to speak under those circumstances? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to administrative items. Agenda Item Number Nine, Appointment of the Chairman and Vice Chairman. And these appointments would be effective beginning at the October 1 Planning Commission meeting. So with that, do we have a motion for Chairman? I guess I'd like to make a motion for Chairman being Josh Ailer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Chairman Whitman? It's weird to say. Second by Commissioner Blazer, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Do we have a motion for Vice Chairman?
I would like to make a motion for Chris Sippel to be Vice Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Bloomfield? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Welcome, gentlemen. Next month, woo-hoo! All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Ten, Appointment of a zoning hearing officer, an alternate zoning hearing officer. And do we have a motion? Guess I will again make a motion that Commissioner Cavaney be the ZHO. Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Chairman Whitman, and a second by Commissioner Blazer? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are you opposing it, Cavaney? Vote now or forever hold your peace.
I'm standing, huh? Aye, aye.
Okay. Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. And do we have a motion for alternate zoning hearing officer?
I would like to make that motion for Commissioner Whitman now.
Not till next month.
Oh, okay. Chairman Whitman to be the alternate ZHO.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Cavaney? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, for the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of August 6, 2014. Do I have any? Do I have a motion? Any requests of changes? Kind of need a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Perfect. Can I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Commissioner Sippel, a second by Commissioner Blazer? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. With that, we'll recess the Planning Commission and convene as the Board of Adjustment in Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is AP 1404, and ZI 14-16. It's Appeal of the Gilbert Board of Adjustment from the Town of Gilbert Zoning Administrator Interpretation for Storage Yards for Rent. And this is located, um... I don't think we have a location listed here. But anyway, the request is actually to continue to the January 7, 2015, meeting. So instead of hearing, we will entertain the request from the applicant to continue to January 17th, or January 7th. With that, do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue the case to the January 7 Planning Commission, or Board of Adjustment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Board Member Ailer, a second by Board Member Sippel? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, or Minutes. Consider approval of the Board of Adjustment minutes at the August 6, 2014, meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the Board of Adjustment meeting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by Carl Bloomfield, or Commissioner, Board Member Bloomfield, second by Board Member Ailer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. With that, we'll adjourn the Board of Adjustment and reconvene as a Planning Commission. Public hearing consent items. Consent public hearing items will be heard at one public hearing. After the consent public hearing, these items may be approved by a single motion. At the request of a member of the commission or staff, an item may be removed from consent calendar and may be heard and acted upon separately. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent public hearing and approved under a single motion. The consent agenda items consist of Agenda Item Number Fourteen, which is S14-09. It's the enclave at North Shore, located at the northeast corner of McQueen and Elliott. And it's a preliminary, request to approve of a preliminary plat and open space plan. And that's, staff is requesting a continuance to the October 1 meeting. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, which is S14-07 for City Gate. It's a request to approve a preliminary plat and streetscape plan for property located at 5150 East Baseline Road. And staff is also requesting a continuance to the October 1 Planning Commission meeting. Agenda Item Number Sixteen is Z14-16. It's White Fence Estates. It's a request to rezone approximately 6.81 acres of property located south of the southwest corner of 130th Street and Warner Road, from 6.1 acres of single-family SF6 to 6.81 SF6 with a PAD, to modify minimum lot area, minimum side, front, and rear setbacks, maximum lot coverage, and to allow two-story plans. And that concludes the consent agenda items. Is there anybody here? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on any of these items? Commissioner Cavaney has requested that Item Number Sixteen, White Fence Estates, be pulled from the consent agenda and heard upon, heard separately, under the public hearing portion of the agenda, the non-consent portion. So with that, do I have a motion for Agenda Items Number Fourteen and Fifteen?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and withdraw Item Number Sixteen to the non-consent agenda.
And that approval is the continuance for those two items to October 1? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Bloomfield. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Moving on, we'll hear Agenda Item Number Sixteen first, but we'll go ahead and do the public hearing non-consent introduction. The non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. And with that, we will open up Agenda Item Number, or introduce Agenda Item Number Sixteen, which is Z14-16. It's White Fence Estates. It's a request to rezone approximately 6.81 acres of real property located at the southwest corner of 130th Street and Warner Road to SF6 PAD with some modifications to the development standards. And with that, we'll invite up Mr. Nathan Williams.
Thanks, Chairman. Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission, you saw this last month at study session. And based upon your recommendation, the applicant changed their request to rezone the site from SF6 conventional to SF6 PAD versus what they had last month, which was SFD PAD. So that essentially changed the deviation requests. I'll give a brief overview, and then we'll go over the deviations. But essentially, you've got an existing final plat approved for the site, 27 lots, all the same size, 55 by 110, minimum lot size, so on and so forth. So that plat's already been approved and is what the applicant wants to do and move forward with. The deviations have changed based upon the request from last month because, obviously, the standard requirements for SF6 are different than SFD. So I'll touch on those just briefly for a second. Again, the lot size is 55 by 110. That does not change. The applicant has requested a 10-foot front setback livable. I do not see them in the audience. They may have thought it was approved, or something along those lines, but they mentioned to me they wanted a...
Amy, I think, is giving the nod that they're on their way back. She may have flagged them down in the parking lot.
Yeah, and they mentioned to me that they were looking for both livable and side-entry garages for a 10-foot front setback. Five-and-five setback versus a five-and-10, and then a 20-foot, a 15-foot rear setback instead of 20.
But these are the same standards that were presented last month, just basically deviations based on that.
Exactly right. So what's changed is that, you know, things like lot coverage, you know, 45 for a single-story, 40 for two-story, they want 55 and 50, and then 55 for the individual two-story plan of 211. And so, you know, I can touch on those if you want, or not, but essentially, that's the only change is based upon, you know, the difference in SF6 and SFD. So...
Chairman, maybe a shot? I pulled it back.
Sure.
So I went back and read the minutes from our study session last time, right, where we talked about this. And some of my concerns, and I don't see them addressed, and maybe I'm the lone person with these concerns, and fair enough, but I had mentioned that the side yards being both five feet were incredibly small and, to me, not acceptable. I don't find those to be acceptable side yard setbacks on a residential. We'd also talked about window facing, windows facing north, two stories facing north, and had even given recommendations that we address those plans with windows and, even if possible, not allow two stories. And I don't think that was a consensus, but I do think the windows facing the north through the commercial was a consensus, or nearly. So, and I don't see any of that addressed in here. As far as I can read, it looks like all two-story plans will be allowed to the north, and the side yard setbacks are both five feet, which then consequently decreases the, or increases the lot coverage, which is another variance being requested. And so I think this plan could have been designed to accommodate the zoning that they're asking for, and I'm a little concerned that none of those comments that I had are apparently addressed, so.
Commissioner Cavaney, I'll address, one of them actually was the rear windows facing the north. They, there was, I believe, one or two of those plans, I think it was 211 here, or was it 216?
It was 211 and 216, right?
Yeah, yeah. So they eliminated any windows from their options along the rear, which would be the north elevation. So they did get rid of those on both plans, or any option of a window facing the north. So they did remove that from the recommendation. They did not change the five-and-five request that you referenced, but just to answer that question.
Okay, thank you. All right, very good. I'm glad to see the windows are gone. I guess, is there any other concern from any of the other commissioners that we're allowing them to increase lot coverage at the reduction of side yard setback when they could easily design these lots to be wider? They lose lots, no question, but they become compliant within our zoning requirements. It'd just be, if I'm the only person here, then fair, then it would be six to one, but...
Well, I think, as we discussed at the last meeting, this is more of an infill piece of property, and so, and when the case was originally brought to us, I think it was last year, maybe earlier this year, I can't remember the specific timeline, but the residents bought off on this plan, and the applicant thought that they would be able to develop this plan in working with staff, based on the layout that they had at that time. It wasn't until they were, I think, going through the permitting process that they realized that unfortunately it wasn't going to be permitted to be developed with the standards and as planned. And so they're basically coming back in to document what was, they thought, and what we thought we had originally approved, and what the neighbors thought they had originally approved. And so from my perspective, given, I think we were looking at this, again, this is my perspective only, if I was looking at this as a vacant parcel that wasn't considered infill and wasn't surrounded by commercial, I might have a different outlook or a different view, similar to yours, because I'm not a fan of deviations to residential subdivisions just to deviate. That's certainly not something that I support, but in this particular instance, I don't have any particular issues. Anybody else?
I think we're ready to vote, then.
Well...
Vice Chairman Ailer?
I do have a question to it, because it is a concern, and we talked about FS6 versus FSD, because we originally came, this idea came in as SFD, and to go to deal with the deviations. How, how, how does that work with this plan?
Commissioner Ailer, perhaps I can answer the question by, you know, originally, the SFD, you know, like essentially, we'll talk about the side yard setback, because that's the main issue at this point, but in SFD, the standard setbacks are zero and five. So what they were asking for last time, which is one of the reasons that SFD was chosen as a zoning category of choice, was that they were in excess of their side yard setbacks. So when we changed things to an SF6, you know, by default, that changes what the deviations are. So now, from asking for deviations that are in excess of conventional SFD code, we're asking for deviations that are below the requirements of SF6 conventional. So, you know, when we, when we had them do that, that changed things a bit, that changed the dynamic a bit.
And this is only to the second-story pieces of the lots, 1 through 6, right?
The side yard setbacks would apply to all 27.
Entire development.
Yeah. I mean, overall, I have an agreement in, in a... I don't like to deviate, and I think these lots are small, but where we, not the lots, well, the side yards, but with the chairman's points that it is an infill site, it's, it's coming in to fix something, I can support it. But I see it as a infill, small site, not something to set a presence to, to do this the next one over.
Thanks for, I appreciate the history and the recall. I'm very grateful, thank you. So I remember this, and, and thank you for your clarification.
Okay. Any additional comments? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. If I don't have any, would the applicant like to make a presentation, or you want to roll with it?
No questions, I don't need to say anything. I can, I can answer.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Good.
Okay. And I don't see anybody in the audience wishing to speak to this matter, so with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion.
I guess I'll propose a motion, if there's no discussion. I'd like to propose a motion for approval for Item Number Sixteen, ZA 14-16, the White Fence Estate, located generally at 130th Street and Warner.
For the, for the reasons set forth in the staff report.
For the reasons set forth in the staff report.
All right. I have a motion by Vice Chairman Ailer, a second by Commissioner Sippel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for coming back from the parking lot. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, or Seventeen, is Z1308. It's the Town, Gilbert Town Center Mixed Use Plan. It's a request to amend the ordinances for the Settlers Point PAD and the Gilbert Town Square PAD by removing the Settlers Point PAD and the Gilbert Town Square PAD, approximately 25.3 acres of real property consisting of regional commercial and all with a PAD overlay, located at the southeast corner of Gilbert and Warner, and approving a development plan with RC zoning district on the land. And with that, we will invite up Mr. Nathan Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So this is the, the follow-up to the previous use permit we just discussed at study session. Give you a brief overview again, I won't waste too much of your time, but the, on the intro, since we talked about it earlier, but what we're talking about is a rezoning of 25.3 acres highlighted here at the southeast corner of Gilbert and Warner. Again, the old development plan that was approved for Gilbert Town Center, 180,000 square feet of commercial, office, retail, six, four, four-to-five-story condominium, residential loft, and so forth, buildings located on the southeast portion of this site, and a overall, pretty intense development plan. So what the applicant's requesting is to amend this development plan, as the Banner Health Center did on the parcel in the middle, and they're amending, asking to amend the development plan and create a new development plan. As you know, there's an associated use permit, associated with the, with the project, and we talked about that earlier, but that use permit is, is applicable to multifamily in RC. The zoning, although, does not look at those multifamily findings of fact, will, will have to look at, you know, the integration aspect of it with this request. But, you know, we'll talk about that in a second. Again, the process would be this zoning, recommendation made by the Planning Commission on the project to Town Council, preliminary scheduled for September 25, and then a potential hearing in October, Planning Commission for any use permit, if that's necessary. Okay, so here's the development plan that's requested. This would be the development plan that is associated with the rezoning. This would be, again, similar to what Banner did on their parcel, amending the old ordinance 1689 for Gilbert Town Center and creating a new development plan for the site. As you could see, there's 13.7 acres, there's a multifamily development, 11 apartment buildings, and it would solidify where those access points are, where the buildings are, where, and so on and so forth. It would also solidify the retail commercial on the northwest parcel, parcel one. We'll call the parcel, to the southeast, parcel two, as indicated on the development plan here. So let's get into a little bit to the evaluation of it. As I mentioned, it's not quite the same dynamic as the use permit, but we'd still want to look at this development plan in terms of, isn't it integrated, does it create an integrated mixed-use development plan because it has multifamily associated with it, even though it's in RC? And if we were to, perhaps, this development plan were to be approved, it still has to go through the use permit process, so we'd want to, we'll need to think about it from that perspective, because would a use permit be supportive on the site with, if the zoning were approved? So kind of got to think about it from that aspect. But, in any case, the, here's some evaluation that we've provided, and it's in the staff report, but I've kind of condensed it here. Staff's evaluation of the proposal, based on some of those findings of facts, or based on those ideas or those criteria. Integration, sustainability through compact design, pedestrian scale and orientation, transportation, connectivity, density, deviations, self-imposed user limitations, those are the aspects that staff has viewed and reviewed the zoning request. To touch on a few of them again, staff doesn't feel that there's integration between land uses, there's essentially separate land uses. Staff doesn't believe that the buildings are oriented in a manner which promotes pedestrian connectivity and activity. It's more vehicular-based, it's automobile-based. The lack of outdoor gathering areas and outdoor plazas, the walled apartment complex is that creating kind of a separate, also a separate use, somewhat segregating it from the rest of the site. That's an aspect that we looked at, in terms of the vehicular orientation. Again, town, we talked about the drive aisle briefly a bit earlier, that, as you could see, this jog in this parcel being created, I know that's a point of discussion we discussed, but the reason that jog was created is because originally, when Banner went through, we wanted to see that drive aisle go through. No matter what user it was, we did not know whether it would be apartments, we did not know whether it would be any other of the multiple, multiple uses that are allowed in in RC, but we wanted to see a cross-access there. So that was, that's why that was created, site plan lacking that. But, again, let's talk about, let's talk about the deviations. We didn't talk about that much in the use permit, because it wasn't necessarily applicable, but it is applicable to the zoning, obviously. So what the applicant is requesting is that along the, along Palm Street and along Civic Center Drive, the, the building setback would be 10 feet. That means, essentially, what they have to adhere to is, is RC development standards. They're essentially asking for multifamily in RC. Multifamily setbacks would be 30 feet along Civic Center, for example, but they only have to have 25 in RC, but what they're now requesting is 10 feet. So these buildings would be 10 feet from the right-of-way, and you'd have a 6-foot view wall around the, encompassing the property for security, so on and so forth. So that's one of the deviations. They're also deviating from the step-back requirement along predominantly Civic Center. Anything within 100 feet of residential property has to be stepped back, essentially, at the third floor, 10 feet in height, generally speaking. That's what it is in multifamily, and it's a little bit wordier in RC, but at the end of the day, it's, it's basically, the third story has to step back 10 feet. And that, they're trying, they would like to eliminate that as part of the deviations as well, which would encompass predominantly these buildings here. Finally, a bit of a deviation would be the landscape setback, that would be typically 20 feet, and they would like to have it 10, wherever buildings are, and everywhere else it would be 20 feet. So those are the deviations that they requested with this proposal. And, I don't know if I summarized them here, I guess, but essentially, those deviations are not something that staff is supportive of with this rezoning request. Staff doesn't feel like it really provides any benefit to the project or the site. It doesn't help make it integrated, mixed-use development. It doesn't really provide any tangible benefit to the site or to the town, for that matter. So, and then finally, as we touched on earlier, limited, use limitations, time of time and so forth, based on whether it's a healthcare facility or a doctor's office, there's time limitations on there, but staff feels that those use limitations are, are based upon or created by the property owner. The previous property owner of 37 acres, the current property owner of the 25.3. This is a reference plan that we looked at earlier, that shows you access, circulation. Essentially, you'd have, Palm Lane would be improved with any rezoning, so if anything were to be developed, Palm Lane would have to be developed, they would be dedicating 33 feet of half-street right-of-way here, but they would have to improve around 42, based upon traffic and engineering standards, so that you could have two-way traffic. If one of these parcels, obviously this one, were to be developed, then entirety of Palm Lane to Gilbert Road from Civic Center would have to be improved to those, to engineering standards. So, again, that'd be around 42 feet, it would allow for two-way traffic. They would have to improve some of the, some of the road on town property, but, you know. But in any case, I just wanted to touch on that that Palm Lane would have to be fully improved with any development that occurred. Let's talk about conformance with the general plan. So one of the things that is different in a rezoning is that we have to look at it as how does it conform with the general plan? So we're asking to rezone the property from RCPAD to RCPAD. Well, what does that mean? It means we're changing the development plan, which, if anything were to go in here, as we talked about, they would have to amend the development plan anyhow. But based upon the development plan that's provided, we have office, retail in the northwest portion, and we have multifamily apartments on the southeast portion. So we have to look at, based upon this development plan, how does it conform with the general plan? Some of these aspects that I would touch on are in your staff report, are that, you know, the goal of creating a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood and convenient employment, retail centers. Well, you know, staff essentially feels that the overall traffic circulation is not very well-balanced. It's essentially, you know, as we talked about, segregating parcels out, you know, the main access to the multifamily would be here, egress would be here, no other access into the site. They would improve Palm Lane, and if and when this developed as shown here, there would be some cross-access, and I know that they've talked to Banner and have talked about cross-access at this point. But, you know, we do not know when, if, how that, how that develops. So there's concern for us in that meeting that, you know, some of those general plan goals and policies, and that it is auto-oriented design, it's not pedestrian-oriented, it's not really tying into the surrounding community as a previous development plan. Which leads me to the next conformance with the general plan. Which leads me to the next conformance with the general plan note that I have. Interconnecting to the neighborhoods, retail, employment areas with a system of pedestrian bicycle routes. Well, again, the old plan, excuse me, had far more, you know, connection with the surrounding neighborhoods. And I know we talked about whether this connected to the neighbors, the municipal center, the neighbors of the east, the residential to the east, the retail to the north. Staff does not believe that it does. It believes that it's, you know, a unique or a standard suburban apartment complex that has its own open space, with the exception of the six-foot wide trail that's located along the eastern boundary, the fitness trail. So minimal interconnection with the neighborhoods and surrounding property owners, in staff's opinion. Residential, non-residential transitions, not integrated. So essentially, our concern here is that the existing residential uses aren't necessarily, you know, protected from the negative impacts of this proposal. They're asking for deviations of a 10-foot setback along Civic Center closer to the residential, as well as deviations with setback to the municipal center, to Palm Lane. So you're talking about more intense than what's allowed in RC, which is even less and more a reduction of what's allowed in multifamily. So it's a, it's a fairly intense request that they're asking for on these deviations. And again, staff is having a hard time finding the benefit that would justify such deviations, for one. And then finally, in my last, it would be the project does not make strategic use of open space. So, you know, again, with, the way it's laid out and designed, obviously with Banner where it is, and in this parcel where it is, and the commercial and office parcel where it is, there's minimal interaction between the parcels. That's, that's a difficulty of this site. And that, that's something that the applicant was, was challenged with, and they had to figure out a way, or try to figure out a way to do so. They provided a trail across here, which I believe Banner is comfortable with, sidewalks, and then this six-foot wide fitness trail. So essentially, you know, there is really no active and passive open space that would integrate or tie this site together, with the exception of those trails. All the open spaces on, internal to the multifamily complex. So, you know, for those reasons, we just felt that the conformance with the general plan was lacking as well. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do you have any questions for staff, Vice Chairman Ailer?
Yes, on the deviation for setbacks of 30-foot to 10-foot on Civic Center, would we be looking at the setback deviation in a different way if the boulevard was made that we were, the access, the road from the Banner site across? If that was a street, it's private, but if that was a street, would you recommend 30 feet setback from, from that boulevard too, in design?
Commissioner Ailer, no, they're not asking for any deviations along that parcel because we are looking at it as an RC piece. When you have an RC piece that's combined, you don't really apply individual.
No, but I'm asking for staff's opinion, if, if it was a street, say it was a public street.
Okay.
Would, would staff recommend a 30-foot setback from that street with buildings?
If it was a public street with dedicated right-of-way, then it would by default have to meet those setbacks.
Right, but as a planning, if we were looking at having an integrated site, I would think that having a 30-foot setback from that street wouldn't create a boulevard effect. It would create a, I mean, you, you would want to bring the buildings up to the street if you had, if you were creating what was, what I'm looking at here in the original site plan. And they have the street accesses and I'm looking if there is a design and, and of Civic, if I was looking at Civic and trying to integrate their design into this, looking at this design, looking at their design, if I'm trying to build the buildings and having a 30-foot setback, I guess the question is, would staff's opinion to be a 30-foot setback on internal streets too? I know it's not part of the, part of what's being asked, but I'm looking at Civic Center as, creating that as a boulevard effect and trying to see, the reasoning for the deviation of bringing the buildings up 10 feet onto Civic Center is to create more, more interaction between the building and the pedestrian and the landscape and a walkpath. I, I'm trying to understand staff's opinion of why we would want 30 feet. I think it would create an even more separation from the public on Civic than, than it would be if you brought the buildings closer.
Commissioner Ailer, I would, I would answer the question with, it's a 25-foot setback required in RC, and that's what they have to meet. They're asking for 10. Staff's opinion is that that does not add to pedestrian orientation and scale and activity, notably when there's a fence around it that is, you know, walling it off from the surrounding neighborhood. So, you know, an aspect of that is that, you know, if it were to tie directly into the street and, you know, you have some, maybe a brownstone field where you walk right in, you hit the street, you're off, you're going, perhaps. But when you put a fence around it, you're not, it's not really an integrated, I mean...
I agree. So, but I'm looking at if that's a possibility. And it's not being proposed to us, but more of a brownstone effect. I mean, of course, we're looking more modern, but the idea of a brownstone idea and that integration, if that was a possibility, it's not in front of us.
Right, I, I mean, my other comment would be that, you know, it is not on the onus of staff to provide a benefit of the, of the deviation, it's on, it's on the applicant. So what benefit are we getting from that, that 10-foot, that reduced setback? Staff's opinion, no benefit. So I can't, they could answer the question as to why they proposed a 10-foot setback, and I'm sure you'll ask them, but, you know, but, so they can answer that, the intent of that. But our evaluation is that it doesn't really provide any value to the, to the property when you fence it off and wall it off and so...
Right, no, I understand that. I'm just asking the brownstone effect. I'm saying, if you're taking away the wall, bringing the building to the front.
Right.
Making more interaction, is that more in line what staff would be looking for?
I would, I would, I would answer, yeah. I mean, that, that would help in terms of justifying what's, you know, integrating and connecting with these surrounding neighborhoods that you see here, you know?
Right.
Right.
Thank you.
Staff, Mr. Williams, my takeaway so far from staff's presentation in both cases this evening isn't, is that it isn't necessarily a use issue. It's not a residential unit issue. It's a design of the proposed residential in the mix of the regional commercial that is the concern. Is that a fair analysis?
So...
Because clearly, we approved previously a residential component, right? A multifamily component. So a multifamily component was approved on this parcel, and that was because it was integrated and felt it met the, the intent of what we were expecting to see on this parcel or in this area. But my feeling from the staff report isn't necessarily that you're against the residential, you're just against the way it's currently designed, and that it's not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily meet the intent of the mixed-use component of regional commercial.
Chairman Whitman, that's, that's, I mean, that's, I would say that's correct. You know, we, the, what we have to evaluate, they're requesting multifamily in RC, so we have to evaluate it on, if you want that and you don't want to just request conventional multifamily, if you want multifamily in RC, there has to be integration. There, there has to be, you know, all these aspects that we discussed. So the original development plan, as you saw, was, was something unique, it's something different, and obviously there was a component of residential there. So when you're, when you're asking to amend that and remain multifamily in RC, you know, we're looking at it like, how do you provide integrated mixed-use? All those different characteristics, you know, mixed-use, pedestrian scale, connectivity, how do you do that? And, and, you know, to your point, we just do not feel that the proposal has done that.
And this is based off of, I'm assuming, staff's recommendation is based off the criteria that was just recently approved to document how mixed-use could be compatible with residential in RC?
Correct, that's correct, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Blazer?
Sorry, did you have something for staff?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Didn't mean to catch you off-guard.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I, I'll be honest with you, I, it's a tough balance between, you know, being market-driven, what the market will bear, or holding out a little bit. That's the sense I get. Is there a different zoning that this developer could pursue and by right have the opportunity to develop, you know, multifamily? And I guess a question for the developer would be, you know, why, why are they choosing to leave it regional commercial and not rezone it other, something else? But could you respond to that? Are there other, are there other zones?
Yeah, Commissioner Blazer, yeah, thanks for the question. Yep, it, they're, I mean, what they're proposing, the only zoning would be multifamily medium, which they're, they're just under 20 dwelling units an acre. So that would be the only zoning category that would facilitate what they want to do. You know, I believe, and the applicant can answer the question, you know, better than I for them, but, you know, my understanding is they, you know, they originally wanted to, you know, the original intent was just to, you know, amend the development plan, kind of stick with what was originally there, just do it in a different manner. Banner was, was placed here, so we're trying to work around those challenges. You know, we want to kind of keep with the same, you know, components or, you know, mixed-use. But again, to your point, you know, that, or to my previous point was, it's just not integrated mixed-use. So, you know, to answer your question, you know, multifamily would be the only thing that would facilitate something like this by, by right. Otherwise, if you're doing multifamily in RC, we, you know, we're having this discussion now.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Muddy, sorry.
All right, thank you.
I apologize.
I wanted to understand the, the open space component of what would typically be required in multifamily, how that compares to what they're proposing here. And what I'm looking at is a 43% open space that's being proposed here. It looks like under conventional RC, the criteria is 15%. So it seems like they're well exceeding the typical RC criteria. But how does that compare to what you were mentioning before of traditional multifamily zoning?
Commissioner Muddy, thanks for the question. Yeah, they, they are, they are well above the open space requirements for regional commercial. Maybe someone has the multifamily in front of them. I thought it was 50% or 45% open space. We could check on that, but they're at 43%. So they're fairly close to what multifamily would require. I think they're slightly below.
One other question, on the perimeter wall, I understand some of the discussion about removing it to facilitate more pedestrian friendliness or integration with the surrounding areas. What are the trade-offs? Is it, are there, are there safety issues or other issues that we give up for those aesthetics by removing the wall?
Commissioner Muddy, again, the, well, to answer that question, there's, there's, I would, the applicant, I'm sure, would argue that, you know, for security and so on and so forth, that they require those types of things. I know there's developments around town that are even being proposed now through, whether it be AgroTopia or something along those lines, that they have low walls that, you know, provide some level of physical, you know, visual separation, but it's really open, you know, whether it's a fence that, and a, and some sort of vehicular gate for cars, you know, you know, whatever the case may be. There are different, I would imagine, remedies that, that could be provided instead of a six-foot wall for, you know, complete security there. So, you know, there would, there, there could be options, in my opinion. Whether they would like to do that, it's...
A quick question for you. Did I hear that Alliance is the developer proposed for this? Are they also developing the, the parcel in Town Center, Gilbert Town Center? No?
Oh, across the street, uh, right. And I don't believe that's them. I think that's changed a few times, and the last person that we spoke with was Meritage, but I don't know if that's happening either, so...
Okay. Any further questions for staff, Vice Chairman?
So to get off the multifamily side, the, we're now looking at both, both sides together for this part of the zoning. So what we have to look at is how the design of the multifamily is connected to the office space and that integration in what we're dealing with right now.
That is, that's correct.
Yeah, just verification.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams. With that, we'll invite up the applicant. If you could give your name and city of residence for the record, Mr. Gilbert?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
To the question earlier about the open space requirement in multifamily medium, the answer is 40%.
40, great, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Gilbert. My town of residence is the town of Paradise Valley. I'm here representing both the property owner, which is Arizona Holdings, which is owned by Lehman Brothers, and also Alliance. With me this evening is Michael Bronska, representing Lehman Brothers. And representing Alliance is Ian Swergold and Jeff Kern, and also their architect, Rich Barber is here. All of these individuals are available and well-schooled in the project and are willing to answer any questions or details that you may have, particularly with regard to the design, which is an area I am not particularly strong in. So please feel free to invite them to the podium and give them an opportunity to explain or answer any questions that you have. I'd like to start by saying, we're here this evening in the capacity simply to amend the conceptual plan. That's what we applied for. We also applied for a conditional use permit. It was our intent originally to have them heard together, which I think would have made a lot of sense. But it's been bifurcated. That was not our choice. But since that's the way it's been bifurcated, I think it's somewhat difficult to talk about this project without talking about the conditional use permit and the need for integration. But having said that, that's the hand we've been dealt, and so our remarks will be limited to the conceptual site plan. But as Nathan pointed out, there must be some discussion with regard to integration. So we intend to do that. But one should not conclude from my comments this evening that all the arguments we have on integration and all the details that we're going to bring forward, because that's not before you this evening, that we will present in connection with the use permit are exactly the same as what we're going to present tonight in conjunction with the conceptual site plan. I think as we reason together, that's an important distinction to make and a predicate understanding that I think is crucial to going forward with understanding this project. I'd like to clarify one other thing. There has been some talk, and at least innuendo, in both the study session and in the comments that emanated in your questions to the staff person tonight, is, well, is there another alternative? Could they not come in and apply for multifamily zoning? The answer is yes, we could do that. We could come in and ask to have this case rezoned to multifamily. We chose not to do that because we thought it gave you much more control to have this case stay as regional commercial and with the requirement that we come in and have a use permit. But in response to the commissioner, or to the chairman's question, to the staff member, we specifically sat down and talked with the staff, and we said, we can go either way. Would you recommend approval if we came in for multifamily? The answer was no. So it wouldn't have made any difference whether we came in with multifamily or we came in in the posture that we're in now. The staff would have... The staff would have recommended denial. We were told that, and we spent a lot of time with the staff discussing that before we filed this case and came forward in the posture that we're in. I do digress a bit, but let me say that I believe the town is much better off for our coming in and staying with the regional commercial and amending the conceptual plan. That way, you at least have an opportunity to require some integration. If we came in for multifamily, you would not. There would be no requirement that we do so. So with those predicates in place, let me go forward. Our proposal is to basically reconfigure, modify, and update the October 25, 2005 approved mixed-use conceptual development plan for Gilbert Town Center. We will limit our comments to that issue. At the same time, we are proposing that we will preserve a portion for the multifamily that was an integral part of the original plan. Without multifamily, you don't have a mixed-use plan here. That's plain and simple, the fact of life. So in order to have a mixed use, which you all say you want, you've got to have some multifamily here, or it isn't a mixed use. And the idea behind the original plan focused on mixed use. It was a mixed-use plan. So you -- the multifamily is an integral part of the original plan. We're coming forward with that same mixed-use component and multifamily, but we submit with a much more realistic plan, rather than 1,200 units, we're proposing 256. It's important to note that the proposed request does not change the underlying zoning. That stays the same. Now, one of the nice things that we have this evening is that we have a developer. Not only a developer, but a developer that is very well-known for very high-quality multifamily projects throughout the valley. A question was posed to us as if they were the applicant in the other case that came before you that was across the street. They were not. Apparently, we found out belatedly that their name was used, but that was not with their permission, nor were they affiliated with that piece in any way. Incidentally, they were offered that piece and this piece at the same time. And they chose this piece that is before you this evening because they felt it was a much better parcel for multifamily. The Alliance proposal this evening is two and three stories juxtaposed against the 2005 plan, which reached five and in some instances, six stories, and had a height permitted of 65 feet and was composed of 30 dwelling units per acre. We're at 19, two and three stories, drastic reduction in the amount of multifamily. We'll talk about that more. But when we went out and visited with the neighborhood, they were aghast when we showed them the approved plan of the five-story buildings and the original approval for the 1,200 units. Someone asked the question in the study session, were those units condominiums or were they rentals? It was not specified. So they could have all been multifamily rentals, they could have all been condominiums. Based on what we know about the market, they would not have been condominiums. Now, we are proposing two minor deviations. Incidentally, as a minor digression, I hate that word deviations. It sounds so pejorative. I prefer to use the word adjustments. Deviation sounds like it comes from the derivative of deviant or something of that type. But they are modifications or adjustments to the ordinance. Now, let me talk about them for a moment. First of all, we are only proposing these adjustments to the ordinance for the multifamily parcel only. We are not asking for them for the retail portion. And remember, this application tonight covers both, the retail at the immediate corner of Gilbert and Warner, as well as the proposed multifamily project. Now, going forward, we are asking for a 10-foot setback along Civic Center. Now, that 10-foot setback was described by the staff as providing no benefits to the town. We take vigorous umbrage with that characterization. First of all, by providing the 10-foot setback, we provide more shade, we provide more integration with the pedestrian people using the pedestrian facilities along Civic Center Drive. Everywhere I go, the push from municipalities is to bring the project up closer to the street so there will be more eyes on the street. So there are some specific benefits. Another benefit is that by pushing it forward, we can increase the open space. We're not changing the RC ordinance, and that only requires 15%. We're at 43%, which is more than we would have to provide even if we came in for multifamily. So there are a plethora of benefits that are available with this proposal. Furthermore, this proposal only affects two homes. As Mr. Newcombe will now point out, that's -- yeah, there we go. Immediately across the street from this parcel, why don't you go up to the top of Civic Center Drive? Basically, you have retail across the street from us coming down, then you have apartments, then you have open space, all right? Then you have homes. The provision is designed, the spirit of that, is designed to facilitate a benefit to those adjacent homes. Well, let's talk about it in this case. First of all, the building that is right across from the homes that are immediately across the street there from the building that we're talking about, that building at that point is only two stories. We only have to get the setback variance because the building has a two-story and three-story component. But the part right across the street from the residential is two stories. So that leaves one last building, and that is the building where Dennis is pointing out to you now. That is across the street from two homes that either side or back on to Civic Center Drive. Furthermore, and I think this is an important consideration, those homes are about 150 feet away from this building. So those deviations are minor, and they cause no serious problem as far as protecting the adjacent neighbors who are concerned, and we think there is good justification for them. We also have prepared a new visual that shows our landscaping along Civic Center and what we're proposing. We apologize for not submitting this earlier, but as we've gotten feedback, this idea has been presented to us. And so what we are doing is providing us -- taking the fence -- why don't you go with the other one, Dennis? The one that shows the fence setback. Sorry, good help's hard to find here. All right, there, you had it. Sorry for the delay. All right. What we're proposing, as you can see in the red diagram property here, what we're proposing then is taking the fence, leaving the buildings there, but taking the fence and putting the fence further back. So there will be more landscaping, more open space along there. And then we're also willing and would stipulate to putting some benches on the walkway there for pedestrians to be able to sit down, again, to make it more pedestrian-friendly, and again emphasizing the integration. So now, let me move on. That concludes our discussion on the adjustments. Now, let's talk about the posture we're in now. Overlooked in all these discussions up to now is the very salient fact that what is the zoning on this property right now? It is zoned RC PAD with a zoning ordinance that stipulates, stipulates the owner to develop the property consistent with the approved plan that we've talked about. That's right in the ordinance. So let's look at what that plan entails. First of all, we would like you to -- I don't think we need to talk about the ordinance, Dennis. We'd like to talk about the elevations that are part of that plan, okay? Here are the elevations. These are taken right from your file. Here are the elevations. They are taken right from your file. Oh, he got them up, I'm sorry. Here are the elevations for that project that shows the height, the massing, and what's been approved. That's the site plan we're stipulated to now, and that's right in the ordinance. That's what exists today. What we're proposing, we submit, is a much better and much more palatable development. If those neighbors across the street had any idea of what is approved there now, they would be down here en masse protesting because they were very upset when we made the point, when we showed it to them. Furthermore, and I'll go back, the plan as originally presented also involved the area that is part of the Town Center. I actually happened to handle this case for Settlers Point eons ago, and as part of that agreement on the zoning, there was actually an arrangement made where the Gilbert Town Center was basically donated in connection with and part of the rezoning application. That site plan not only showed the portion that we're -- the three parcels we're talking about here, but it also showed the Civic Center building and the open space, which counted as and was part of the open space that was part of the land across the street. We're not counting that in our 43% coverage of the open space, but we think it's a valid point that you need to take into account. It was integrated, and it was part of the entire initial approval. So another significant point is that many of the elements that were integral to that 2005 conceptual development plan have been incorporated into the proposal that is before you this evening. Let me give you five of those. First of all, it uses multifamily, which was required under the old plan, and retail. We have both. And secondly, the enhancement of the municipal facility. We'll talk about in a moment the health and wellness trail that we are using that connects the Civic Center with the project to the north, and also makes it easier to visit the retail that is part of our proposal. We do have pedestrian connections and paths. We'll talk about that in more detail shortly. There are vehicular connections, and we're completing Palm Street. All of those were integral parts of the plan that is on file now, and that is the plan that we're stipulated to as part of the ordinance currently. Now, another point, and I don't know how important it is, but there's a comment in the staff report that says, oh, oh, we can afford to take regional commercial and use it up and not get the benefit of the retail. Well, that plan that is approved on this property shows 179,000 square feet of retail. We're providing 174,000. So you are getting the benefit of the retail on the plan that's currently approved. So it cannot be challenged that we're not providing the same amount of retail that was approved under the original plan. Furthermore, and we'll talk about this in a little bit, but we are willing to deed restrict the immediate corner parcel that lies at Gilbert and Warner, and deed restrict that with the deed restriction running to the benefit of the town, committing that that will be developed as retail. Now, let's now briefly talk about the history. What changed the paradigm in this, and it's already been referred to. I'm sorry, I think I'm going too long. I'm getting the evil look from some of you. I will try to accelerate my presentation. I've been accused of being paid by the word. I assure you, that's not the case here tonight. I'll try to move it along here. But let's talk about the appearance of Banner. First of all, the staff report uses this term self-imposed. That's a term they borrowed, I think, from the ordinance that deals with variances, and you can't have a self-imposed hardship. Banner choosing this piece and choosing to remove itself from the overall conceptual site plan was not a self-imposed situation. Banner came to us, and we were desperate to sell the property, and we weren't the only ones that were going all out to attract Banner. The town of Gilbert wanted Banner in the worst way, and everybody worked together to give Banner what they needed. I don't say that in a critical sense, but it is a pragmatic fact of life. And Banner came in and said, we're not going to be part of that integration, and we're going to choose that middle piece. That's the piece we want, and we're going to come in and remove it from the plan. By removing that, that left us in a very challenging position. We now have a separate parcel. And remember, when they came in and got their zoning, even though their zoning went from RC PAD to RC PAD, same zoning, same category of PAD, but they changed the plan and basically brought a new conceptual plan in. That had a very pronounced and powerful effect on our ability to integrate the rest of the site at that time. Fortunately, and I've reviewed the minutes of the planning commission, and some of you were on the planning commission at the time, the planning commission took particular note of the fact that it would be now, if you approved the Banner plan, very difficult to integrate the two sites with Banner and the heart taken out of the middle. While it was acknowledged by the planning commission, frankly, it wasn't apparently discussed at the city council, but the planning commission did discuss it and specifically noted, well, if we grant this request, we've made it very, very difficult for these two parcels to integrate. And basically, there was no discussion about, well, what can we do to mitigate this? There was no request for Banner to integrate. Banner got up and said, we want a separate parcel. That's what it's going to take to get us to come here. Everyone agreed. So it wasn't self-imposed. Banner required that as a condition of coming, and everybody wanted Banner, admittedly including us, but no more than the town. So that changed the basic paradigm when Banner came in, and it was not self-imposed. Now, we're having to play the hand we've been dealt. RC PAD requires integration. It doesn't give a lot of detail on that integration, but here are some ways that we integrate. First of all, we are providing a health and wellness path, as shown on this slide. This health and wellness path replaces the roadway that would otherwise have been required between these two parcels. We're scratching our heads on this one because this is a classic example of how we can integrate with the Banner parcel. The Banner people can use that pathway. The people that are -- and here's what it looks like. The people that are, and here's what it looks like, the people that are employees here at the city at both complexes can use that pathway to walk up and have direct access to the commercial on top there. We will use it, and it integrates, I submit, much more cogently than a roadway running down between the two parcels that does nothing more than bifurcate the two parcels. You put a roadway between it, that doesn't unify parcels, that separates them. This militates much strongly towards an integration. That's our first integration. Our second integration is we're completing Palm Street. Palm Street runs along the border here, and that Palm Street will connect our two parcels, but more importantly, it will also provide a connection for the Banner parcel. So by providing Palm Street, we are integrating. And right now, there's no requirement for Banner to put Palm Street in. Thirdly, we are providing architectural integration. Because I'm running out of time, I'm going to not spend a lot of time on this point, but we are integrating the architecture between Banner, Civic Center, and the retail portion at the immediate corner. We're also integrating by having a similar landscape palette. We'll be utilizing and expanding the Banner landscape palette and carrying it through to the hard retail corner and giving continuity and integration through landscaping. Signage will be the same. We will coordinate the signage. It'll be of the same materials, basically the same kind of signage, another instance of integration. Then, we are also providing a pathway along the southern part of Banner. There's no connection now between this piece and Banner. We met with Banner and got them to reconsider allowing the integration. So we're providing a pathway with Banner's permission, and by the way, Banner is in full support of this application, but we're providing a pathway across the Banner property that connects our property and that property. You won't get that if it's left to the current situation because we negotiated it and we got Banner to go along with it. We're also connecting Banner with our retail, and we've agreed that Banner will, will have a common entryway and connection between the retail and Banner. That doesn't exist now, and in fact Banner resisted that originally. We've gone back to them, carefully worked with them, and the bottom line is, we have integrated this project in every way I can think of to do it. And remember, we're dealing with something that changed the paradigm once Banner was approved. That changed things. We're doing our best to integrate as much as possible. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the comments on the general plan. We vigorously disagree, but in light of time constraints, I'm not going to go into that. I do want to talk just a bit about economics because the staff report opens the door to this, so I'm going to jump in. We hired Elliott Pollak to do a very detailed financial analysis of this project and the benefits that would accrue or not accrue to the town as a result of our coming in. And we did the analysis of apartments versus retail and apartments versus office. And the difference was, over a 10-year period, this project will generate a total of $5 million in revenue to the town. If it were developed as office, it would generate about $1.2 million over a 10-year period. Now, let's also talk about the user. We're here with Alliance in hand. This isn't speculative. They're here. They'll be available to answer any questions. They're the actual user. They could have gone anywhere, including across the road at the other site. They chose this site because they consider it a superior site, vindicating the assessment that this is an appropriate site for multifamily. They are a premier multifamily developer. To show their intent and willingness to go forward, not only have they signed a binding contract with us, but they have also submitted for DRB approval last week. They're for real, and we have someone that is ready to go forward. A comment was made in your study session that maybe the retail and the apartments wouldn't be built together. They may not, but we have some very important news to share with you in that regard. We have not been able, we are not in a position now to release the name, but we are in the final drafts, and will, by the time of the city council, we'll be able to release the name, but it's a well-known retail developer who is going to purchase the retail center at the immediate corner at Gilbert and Warner. Furthermore, one of the conditions that they want to go forward with that contract is to make sure that the apartment complex is approved because they need the business that will be generated by the 250 units there. This is a tough corner. You're, you're all aware of that. And also, this developer and Alliance have done projects next to each other before and have worked together before. It's a very nice relationship. It is very possible that both of these projects will go forward together, and we will have a compact unity of development for all of these parcels. Now, let me end with this last observation. It seems to me that there are four possible uses that could go on this piece of property. I'd like to consider in Suri Autumn each one of these uses. I begin first with office. Can office go there? The zoning allows office, but there are some problems with office. First of all, this office building would be hidden from major streets. It doesn't have any good exposure. Medical would work there, perhaps, because it's next to Banner, but Banner required a deed restriction. Sure, we agreed to it, but we had to agree to it, or Banner wasn't going to locate there. And Banner has got a deed restriction restricting that use for medical uses. Secondly, the office market is depressed. Within a three-mile area, the vacancy rate for office buildings is over 25%. And the rent since 2007, which is a bit of an unfair comparison because that was the peak of the market, but it's still instructive, rent has gone down 25%. Retail, that's a possibility. Well, we've been sitting on this piece of property now for 20 years. We haven't even been able to market until just now, the corner at Gilbert and Warner. This piece suffers from the same malady that office building does. It's tucked away. It's back in the corner. It's not a good site for retail. We haven't had one inquiry or nibble for retail to go on this site. This property has been vacant and passed over for multiple years. The west side of Gilbert Road is struggling, and I submit provides a nice precedent as we focus on this case this evening. Across the street, on the west side of Gilbert, they recently came to you and said, "Hey, we can't market the retail here. So we would like to go for apartments," and you agreed. Both the planning commission and city council approved that, and the rationale, primary rationale for approving that was retail wasn't a good site because why? It didn't have the arterial exposure. We suffer from the same thing with this piece if we were to go forward with retail. Within a three-mile vacancy, or excuse me, within a three-mile radius, five retail centers are now without anchors. The vacancy rate is 20%, and the rents since 2007 for retail have declined 45%. The average rate for retail in this three-mile radius area is $12.91. You couldn't even build a project with that type of rent return now. So retail is not a good option here. The other is single-family. I'm not going to spend any time on that. There's no market for single-family. It wouldn't be appropriate. Talk about disagreeing with your general plan. Single-family would do that in spades, and it's an odd-shaped lot. So that leaves, the only viable use is multifamily. And we stand here now with a market that's good, a user, and a good user is that. It made sense in 2005, and it makes sense today. It's good planning. Density supports the retail, and it's a nice buffer to the single-family homes. You may ask, "Well, what about the vacancy rate of apartments in the immediate area?" We did also the same circumference, and the vacancy rate for apartments is 6%. In other words, they are 94% occupied in the immediate area. This is a good place to have a apartment complex. We've reached out to the neighborhood. I'm always cautious when I make the statement. I know of no neighborhood opposition here this evening. So in conclusion, this makes good planning sense. Multifamily is the appropriate use here. There really is no other use that will work and no other use that ought to go here other than multifamily. We are not asking for any change in the amount of retail that is now approved on the site, so Gilbert gets all of the retail and now maybe more because we have an opportunity to have a user come in and use the property at the immediate corner for retail. We submit that all of these reasons then militate very strongly in support of approving this multifamily project at this site. Thank you for your patience. I know it was a little longer than, you're acclimated to. I'll be shorter on the use permit.
We certainly hope so. Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there any comments for the applicant or questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cavani?
Okay, so let me break this down. You mentioned the 10-foot setback to the right-of-way. You didn't mention why you did that. You said there were some benefits to that, but why, why is that being, could the site not be designed in a way to comply with the setbacks?
Sure, it could. We could comply with the setbacks, but it would reduce the open space. And we like pushing the building further up to the road. That's basically what we're being required to do all over the valley, and it is advantage to us because now we've got eyes on the street, so to speak. Now, Ian, do you want to add to that? I indicated I'm a little weak on design.
No, no, fair enough. No, fair. That's absolutely fair.
Ian Swergel, City of Phoenix, 2415 East Camell Back Road. You know, I'm a good representative of Alliance, managing director here, but Rich is our, our design architect, but we've, I guess, designed those buildings closer for that 10-foot setback, to answer your question. Not only because we're going for more of that urban look and feel to the buildings. So one of the, you know, things that we probably haven't evaluated tonight are the elevations of those buildings and bringing that more contemporary look back to the street as opposed to having a traditional suburban development subject to the 25 and again 30-foot greater setbacks.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I can barely hear you guys. I know, I have a fan behind me, so it's probably not you, but if you wouldn't mind just kind of pounding out a little more. Okay, and then you mentioned something, Mr. Gilbert, about a stipu, there was a stipulation about ownership or something, and I couldn't hear it. I apologize. What was that about? That there was some stipulation that the, it had, something had to be owned by someone?
Deed, deeding the retail. I am sorry.
Deeding the retail to Gilbert or something like that was?
I, I, I have no idea.
Okay. I missed that, and I, okay.
Deed restriction of all the retail.
If you're talking about the deed restriction that we've offered.
To retail.
Yes. We are offering a deed restriction. One of the arguments against us is, "Well, if we allow multifamily on this site, you'll build it and then come back and go to the site at the immediate corner at Gilbert and Warner and say, 'Ah, shucks, golly gee, we can't build retail there either, so give us apartments.'"
Okay.
We're agreeing to deed restrict that. So it will be retail, and we're running the deed restriction to the town of Gilbert so they have the enforcement rights.
Okay. That's what I couldn't hear before. Okay, that's great. Is there, is there any proposed timeline that you would include in that, in that commitment to build? Or no? I mean, I know that's, that's maybe not something you want to do, but, but obviously, one of the thoughts is, "Okay, this gets built and it's 20 years before the other piece goes, and, and there's no, never that connection," so.
Is your inquiry, sorry, Madam Chairman, Commissioner Cavani, is your inquiry, how long will the deed restriction run?
Or no, is there any stipulation within the deed restriction on timing? Or is it just a scope that we will do this?
We're, we're not proposing.
Fair enough. Okay.
On timing, we'll depend on the market. But again, we're in escrow now, or soon to be in escrow with a retail developer that is well-known to the town.
Right. Okay. I meant, I heard you mention that. Okay. All right, I think that's all my questions. I'll give comment when we're ready for comment.
Commissioner Muddy?
Can you speak to the trade-offs of having the site fenced or removing the fence and the applicant's willingness to remove the fence if that increases staff's agreement to the, to the plan?
My name is Rich Barber, Office of ORB Architecture, Phoenix, Arizona. The, the purpose here really was to try and, based on the study session guidelines, was to try and bring buildings closer to the street and provide a more immediate access, gated entries, and really a quick tie to the street, much like you would expect in a, a more urban setting. And I think most of the conversations we're having today are about an urban environment, and, and staff made that very clear. It's, this is no longer the, the Santa Fe look or the Santa Barbara, you know, big setback, big parking lots between us and the, and the street. This is really, we need to get up, get up on the street, reinforce the property edge, and provide access points for residents all the way along this. The, the discussion about integration throughout the parcel has to do with integrating to the street and to our neighbors. We can't just run back and forth behind Banner to get to the retail. We need to engage the street. We need to get, because it's our way to get to the retail. It's our way to go pay the water bill. So there's a lot of connectivity for us right up on the street. And it frankly is, it's basically a cue that was taken from guidelines that were prepared by workshops here in the, in the town for reinforcing, I can't think of the word, but street integration. And so that was the, where the cue was taken from.
So I'm just trying to isolate some of the obstacles that staff has, has itemized as the site not being integrated. I've heard the site being surrounded by a fence as being one of those obstacles. So is that fence critical to the design? Are there trade-offs by removing it? Or is the applicant willing to remove it if that helps to ease some of the staff objections?
Madam Chair, and, you know, Commissioner Moody, with the fence that we're proposing, it's not your traditional six-foot wall. It is a view fence and a view corridor along that Civic Center Drive. We do have some design standards within our own rights because of the level of, or the demographics that we're attracting to our, our communities. Very nice finishes, higher-end, they are a more discerning renter, and with that comes some of the security comments you might have made earlier. You know, we do have some requirements to not have direct access from an open space pedestrian walk to a private patio, to a private window, or to a private door without some of those design elements in place or security elements in place. With that, though, we did, you know, decide and work with our design architects and landscape architects to make sure that those view corridors, those, those fences were view fences where it made sense. Those fences along, you know, specific, some locations at the parking areas were the half fence in the sense that it was a full, you know, half fence up to two or three feet and then view fence thereafter. And that was really just to shield any of those cars that we were, you know, bringing onto the street level.
Any further questions for the applicant? Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I guess we'll start with the fence, since, I mean, I find that to be an integrating piece to this. Are you looking at surrounding the entire site with this view fence? Visually, it's still going to be a fence, and you can see through it or not. So are you looking at surrounding it even? So are you looking at surrounding it even 100%?
Well, I think what you're saying is we do have some buildings that are pushed out against this setback. And I don't know if, Dennis, if you mind going into the site plan, there are some buildings that do provide that perimeter fencing. And then also at the same time, we have looked at those locations where the fence would go in front of some of the parking and bringing that back interior to the community and providing more of that public open space, which the exhibit you viewed earlier was the, you know, that kind of shaded red dash lines indicating those locations by which the fence would be brought back from its traditional setback line and more integrated into the community, providing more of an open space, public seating in those locations.
I mean, I truly appreciate bringing the public more into the site and I think that takes the right step in the direction and bringing the buildings forward. But I think, I mean, this part won't be brought up now, but it is back to the use permit of integration. So I, I just wonder if there's ability in design of moving maybe more of the buildings, flipping around so they're closer to the street, so getting more view fence. And I, I guess it's a quick question for, for staff. Is it to building code or our, our LDC that these view fences, that if a car faces it has to be a solid for up to three feet? So we're going to have solid fence for a chunk of this too. I am for.
And adjacent to the parking areas?
Jason, the parking areas.
Commissioner Ayler, that's, I mean, you're talking about parking screening, which is three feet high.
Right.
So I think, I'm, I'm not sure what their dimensions are. That looks over three feet high, it'd be four, but, so that would already be taken care of by a, a fence of similar design.
But if it's facing the right of way too?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it, regardless, it would have to face the right of way because that's where it's, any parking screen is taking from is the public right of way. They wouldn't have to have parking screening along the rear because there's no public.
Right. That's what the rendering is showing.
Right, there, that's, and then that's their security, right. The one comment I would make is if they want to, they propose bumping it back into landscape setback, which isn't technically allowed, so they, there would just have to be another deviation.
Okay.
In order to allow a fence in the landscape.
Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Are you still talking?
Well, I wanted to know, public, we talked about this 43% open space. Where, where is this 43% and how much of is that tied into public? And maybe you don't have a direct percentage, but do you have a percentage of how much of that is more for public, public use?
I'm sorry, the, in the development of multifamily as per ordinance, there are provisions where buildings can get no closer to one another than 20 or 30 feet, given their sizes.
Right.
There are provisions for walkways to each of the ground floor entrances that are going to be provided. So each building separates not only from the parking, but also from each other and as well as the pedestrian courtyards. The, the benefit, or the, the largest single area that we're dependent on, frankly, and the centerpiece of the, the community, is really the, the pool fitness leasing complex. This doesn't blow up any ba, any bigger apparently, but is this the, the portion of the site which is the deepest? And so generally, I would expect that we've got close to 15 to 20% of our open space area takes place right here. And it's a strongly amenitized location.
The wellness trail.
Yep, and that's, thank you. The remainder, we're also putting, dedicating 20 feet along our boundary that we share with Banner. So that entire face here is the, the landscape and trail as well as the exercise station. That's another 20 foot off that entire lineal footage. So there's a great deal of open space. It's spread around a lot more than large buildings that have single entrances. This is basically putting landscape and open space at everyone's front door.
So part of that 43% is this trailway?
That is correct.
And so public use of that, I mean?
It's completely on our property. That's correct.
Okay. Why we look at this, is there a possibility of making it a little wider? Because just as an overall, I mean, is there ability to take it from six foot, which is a little tight for two people passing each other to, you know, because normally if you're jogging, you're going, so maybe you're walking your dog with your friend or, you know, you're, there's more, you're going to might have points of three people wide and six, six feet is a little tight for that.
I think I can speak for Ian, but the, in this instance, this was a collaborative recommendation that we worked out with staff. And we're both feeling our way along on the best way to propose this. And, and we've talked a little bit about the woods. We decided we wanted to keep it soft so that it was a DG path, so it was kind of had multiple uses. We're certainly open into making it wider. We're going to have fairly good outside, outside elements that involve the exercise equipment. But at the same point, there's no reason that this pathway can't be well-used and a little wider. To answer one of your other, the earlier question, frankly, we visited with staff. As was mentioned, there's really no reason that this wall has to be solid. It could be, it certainly could be open to the path. We kind of talked back and forth and said, well, maybe where there's buildings, we'll leave it view fence, but we, there's no requirement that we, we can make that full view if we chose.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely make it wider.
The answer is yes.
Thank, I just, just wondering where that is, so, thank you. That's it.
Didn't want to cut you off again. Any further questions for the applicant?
I am.
Commissioner Bloomfield?
Ian, I'd like to ask you, only because it was, it was referred to earlier. You chose this site over an adjacent site. I'm curious as to why? Because that might lead me to understand what the strong suits and the strong points are of the site and why it makes it attractive, so.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Bloomfield, it's a great question because we, we are approached with this often and we're, and we're answering it within ourselves and answering with our capital partners and lenders as well. This site, I think, offers a unique opportunity to bring a residential component to a very successful mixed use already. You know, you have the banner with the medical office near, you've got your municipal buildings and campus. And we, we believe strongly that with the introduction of the multifamily, there is a retail user that will be there. So within this mixed use component, we strongly believe that it's a, a much better location for multifamily than, I guess, one of the earlier comments was, would we go over to the other side in the Gilbert Town Center? You know, I don't know, don't want to pretend that I know much about that site. I think there is a strong demand, as Paul had mentioned, for a lot of, for multifamily in this area. It's been a significantly underserved area within the town of Gilbert and within the southeast valley for that matter, over the years where most of the multifamily development had been predicated on transportation designed elements around the 202, access onto the 101 and 202. What we're finding now in our development cycle, call it starting 2010, which was really the onset of the recovery of multifamily market here in the valley, was that the renter demographic and pool changed from where it was before, where they were, you know, not, not necessarily renters by choice, but renters by, they were forced into it because they couldn't necessarily afford a home. What we're finding now with the transfer from homeownership, maybe at the peak up to 71%, and apologize if my numbers are off a little bit, down to maybe historical averages in that 65%, that 6% gap are truly renters by choice. And with that, they're not being forced to a location that gives them convenience to access, to freeways, to jobs. They're saying, I want to rent and where do I want to rent? I want to choose where I want to rent. And that's in a well-amenitized location. I think obviously with the successes that the town of Gilbert has had with the Heritage District, you know, the proximity to that has been a big, strong draw for us. It still does have very convenient access to the 101 and 202s. But at the same time, I think it does provide a more urban setting within, maybe a more, you know, traditional suburban feel or location.
Further questions for the applicant? Vice Chairman? Again, no? Yes?
Well, I just, I don't feel like I got a, a final say on the fence. And I mean, I just, I feel the integration, so you guys really feel you need this fence?
In, in the locations where it's presented right now, we believe it's, it's necessary for some of the security elements that we discussed. I think we can find ways, you know, maybe at suggestion of, of working together through the use permit and design review to remove that fence from those locations. But at the same time, we do have some of those buildings up against that, you know, the perimeter.
But you would have a fence between the building and the, and the street?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Nothing further? Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation made tonight. Is there anything further you'd like to add, Mr. Gilbert? Before close?
I think I've said enough. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, we'll open up the, well, we'll see if there's anybody here wishing to discuss this matter. Is there anybody here? I don't have any cards, so we'll go ahead and, assuming the applicant doesn't have anything further to add, as you just stated, does staff have anything further they'd like to add? Okay.
Madam Chair, we don't have anything further at this point unless you have any questions.
Yes, we do. Stay right there. Commissioner Blazer?
Nathan, the applicant indicated that the, the town discouraged submitting the zoning change or submitting a, a different zoning change. I just want to give you the opportunity to speak to that and what the staff's take is on that.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, this is Linda Edward speaking. That conversation actually did take place. The question to staff was, what are the better chances of rezoning the parcel? Would there be support for amending the existing RC and go for the use permit to permit multifamily? Or would there be better support for rezoning to multifamily? And we did have a discussion on it and our advice to the applicant was that he would have a better chance, the applicant would have a better chance at maintaining the regional commercial on this site because of its size, its location, and its relationship to a, a large civic center and pursue a use permit. So yes, that conversation did take place and that was the advice we gave.
Thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the dais for discussion, possible motion. Commissioner Cavani? You look like you're ready and?
I'm ready. I'm ready. Okay, so, thank you for the presentation. You, you guys did a great job arguing, admittedly a difficult case. And I think I agree with you on many points, I disagree with you on many points. So let me kind of lay those out so everybody can kind of maybe set me straight here. You mentioned that usually the surrounding areas ultimately, when you whittle it down, that this site is probably best suited for multifamily. And I tend to agree, but, and, and we're talking about the southeast parcel, but I tend to agree with integration. And I'll get to that in a minute. I, I don't, I, I don't believe that, I mean, you mentioned that retail is not a good option because certain properties in the area are, are depressed or struggling and vacancy is high. And yet, then you mentioned a few sentences later that there's a prominent retail developer ready to come in and drop some 174,000 square foot of retail. So I'm having a hard time reconciling how it's so depressed, yet they're willing to do that right away. So you mentioned about, let's go to the setback. So I, I really struggle with deviations or adjustments, especially when I don't see a good cause. And, and you mentioned two benefits, increased shade and improved connectivity. With the fence still in place, I don't see any increased connectivity by moving the buildings closer. That doesn't make any sense. And increasing shade, frankly, you're diminishing landscaping along the frontage, so I think you're decreasing shade once the mature, the landscaping is mature. So I don't see any benefit to move the buildings closer at all. And you mentioned, let's go to the connectivity, because I think this is the biggest issue once we get down to it. I think the, the requested deviations are, are really minor. But, but when I look at integration here, and I have had involvement with mixed use developments, in fact, significant involvement, and I have perhaps a, a preconceived as to what that means, but I've reread all of the stipulations within our zoning code to make sure I understand what is clearly required here. And I don't see any effort to do any of the horizontal or vertical connectivity. I, I see that generally as meaning some kind of structural, uh, structural integration, some kind of unique parking to densify the area and make it unique. I think you almost have to look at these parcels as distinct, right? Banner, cut them off. Fair enough. I, I agree with you. It's a har, it's, it's a hard thing to look at now. But it doesn't alleviate the burden of, of RC on the southeast parcel of having a retail mixed use piece or, or some other non-residential mixed use piece. It doesn't have to be retail. I shouldn't have said that. It could be office, it could be, I suppose, a, a variety of other things. But right now, it is a standalone apartment complex. And you mentioned that the, the connectivity or the, the integration was done through a health and wellness pass. I, I don't see that path being a, a, a critical connector. Palm Street finishing, completing that street, that, that was a requirement anyway, and I, I don't see how that necessarily would add benefit. Landscape palette being the same, signage, architectural integration. Again, those are, I, I don't, I don't value those as the real connectors here, the real integrating piece that is being sought for in the zoning code. I think when you step back and look at this, most people would say, there's an apartment complex and there's a small retail center on the corner. I, I don't think this site is as burdened as, as it was painted. I think this is a premier corner with some really nice neighbors and some real potential. I, I agree with Ian. This is a, that's a, that's a special site. I think, I think there's a lot that could be done here. But, but under the RC, I think it, it's got to have better integration. And I would, to me, that means some kind of, of densification to move, moving the parking either to the outside or all to the inside or, or, or maybe underneath. I, I don't know. It could be a variety of those things. Getting some, some other commercial type component on the same lot and not just expect it to be on the other side of Banner and that that'll do. So, so I, I don't see the integration. I, I fail to see that and I, I don't think that's achieved. And to the, to the comment that it could be, it could be multifamily, I, I think it could have been proposed a multifamily, but I think given the vision for this site in this part of the town and this corner, that at this point, at this juncture is probably not, would not be acceptable to me either. So I think you went the right route. I just don't think we got the integration. And I do agree, multifamily is probably the best use for the southeast parcel, but I would just suggest that it needs more integration.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavani. Anybody else like to add anything? Commissioner Muddy?
Trying to get this into a logical flow here. I, I was just digging through some of the staff report and it has a part of the general plan policy. And it says, RC designations are 30 or more acres and are located at freeway arterial intersections or at intersections of arterials. I, I guess I look at these two properties now, they're not, they're not necessarily connected. Neither apart nor together do they total 30 acres. And so as we continue to talk about implementing the RC criteria on these parcels, I have a hard time holding too hard of a line as to how much we, we hold that criteria. It is subjective criteria. And so given the, the context of what's there now, I guess I would lean more towards the lighter side of that criteria. I, trying to understand what some of the, for example, things we could have done that the site plan could do to, to win more staff support. I heard not surrounding the community with a wall, more open space. So we, we talked about the wall, the open space. It appeared to me, from a percentage standpoint, it exceeds the RC code and it exceeds the multifamily code. So I feel like there is an effort there. And then I heard no reduced setbacks and having buildings along the border which feel like they're in direct conflict with each other. I don't know how you, you do both, so I'm, I'm not necessarily in support of having reduced setbacks, particularly where it fronts the single family area there along the southeast. But otherwise, the reduced setbacks seems like they would fulfill some of the staff desire to have buildings along. setbacks seems like they would fulfill some of the staff desire to have buildings along the border. My understanding of the 174,000 square feet of retail is that includes the banner facilities. I don't, I don't think that that northwest corner is going to be 174,000 square feet. It doesn't appear to, it would hold that much there. I think that's about all I have to add.
All right. Thank you. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner.
I guess I, mixed bag. I, I hold true that I think the, the best use of this site is multifamily. A hundred percent behind that. I, I think the real issue that we have is integration and how we deal with that. I, I remember us both talking when we were doing the four fact findings, and we went back and forth in multiple study sessions of how this was going to happen. Because we talked about more other cities, other integration pieces, how do, how did they do it? How are we wanting these four fact finding pieces to work? I, I think this site itself is directs to exactly where we thought we were looking at when we saw Santan with already developed sites where, and it was an example, we have a existing multifamily at that point, and how do we connect around it? And, and we talked about structural pieces. And there's something, and I completely agree. I think that we need to look at this in, in some kind of way of, of connection to those things. So I think that's where I, my only issue to it is how does it integrate to, to the, to the portion of retail and how that works. The issue that we have, and then asking staff, is the, the little strip that we have, that's only right away. That, that's all banner in between. There's, there's no direct piece. So to make that integration becomes a lesser piece of using architectural pieces, using same color, using same palette. I think that actually has, which in a traditional aspect, I would say, yeah, that's, that's the lower end of the connection pieces. I need more connection, physical and, and direct and seeing where it's at. But I think that's where these two pieces can connect to each other, where you can feel the, the connection between the two properties. And, and that tying itself into banner a little bit architecturally, and it ties itself into City Hall. I would like, and I don't know where these mechanisms are going to come through, and I guess I'll need a little bit of help from staff, is, is on this site plan, if we make recommendation to this, and how does that work with, if it goes multiple changes of, they say they're going to move the fence back, maybe reduce it in some areas, make those connections? How does that work with, with non-recommendation or recommendation?
Chairman and Commissioners, I believe the question is, if a motion was made tonight and you would like to condition changes to the development plan or specifics to items on the development plan, how would you condition that? Is that the question?
Yeah, I guess is, are, we would, the mechanism would be conditions.
So therefore, I believe the conditions would need to be specific enough so that the, the change would need to make, be changed prior to the middle of construction drawings. Ideally, the changes would be exhibits prepared prior to council review.
Okay. But for us, it wouldn't come back?
Unless you continued the case with direction to the applicant to make those changes for your review.
Well, I guess that's my question to the applicant. Because I think there's a lot of, of pieces here that really could show in a few renderings and show in a lot of work what a continuance would help a lot. I think would help other commissioners here see what that would look like.
Your Honor?
Yes. Oh, well, I want to know from applicant first, if that creates two hardships.
Mr. Gilbert?
I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Would you be supportive of a continuance to address some of these issues?
We would much prefer, we've been over a year at this, we would much prefer to try to work through the conditions tonight. We would be willing to come back after we've gone through the approval, if you need to take a look. But many of the things you're talking about are design review issues. And I think you can place conditions on the project and keep it moving forward. That would be our preference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sipple?
You know, I'm glad that the vice chair came to one of those conclusions on a continuance. I, I know the applicant said they would prefer to move it on, but I, given what we presented here this evening to us, some of the things that we've talked about, and we have sent applicants back to do additional work and come back to us after hearing what we've said. And in, and in this case, the connectivity is, has been brought up multiple times. And I think that we could have an applicant that could do some additional work with site plan, site preparation, and address those concerns proactively. Because I'm sure that although they are in talks with that corner development, I'm sure it is contingent upon what happens here at this board, so, or this commission. So whether we were to continue it or put stipulations that we then would have to come back to us for approval anyways, at any point, I don't think they're going to lose, but more so postpone maybe a, a potential sale. But that, we shouldn't be making, this commission should not be making decisions based on the sell of a property, or what's better for, but what's better for the community at, at large. So I wouldn't necessarily be against looking at a continuance so that they get it right and then move forward from this, from this dais.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let me give my two cents here. Because I've been struggling listening to this, this presentation and reviewing these cases. I think when this case was originally filed back in 2013, the standards were different. The standards of developing multifamily within RC were different. Obviously, we've added some criteria, specific criteria on that integration and how that mixed use should play out in situations such as these. And so I think that's kind of complicated this case, because I think when the applicant probably originally filed this and was proceeding through the process, through the town's process, that it had a different set of criteria than it now does. And looking at it through the new criteria, I do have some consider, some struggles. Again, I, specifically me, I don't have any specific issues with the multifamily component. The issue that I do have is the design. It is specifically designed, in this particular instance, as a standalone residential multifamily community. I get that we've got some elements that some of the other communities also have, which include view fencing and placement of buildings and maybe a recreational trail. But I don't think that that's significant enough in my mind at this point in time to justify this amendment. Again, I'm, I'm not opposed to the multifamily development. I'm just, I'm not comfortable with the design as it currently stands today. And I think that, I think that maybe if the applicant came back, that deviations could potentially be supported if the design were right. I think if the design came back and it included some clever ideas, clever design concepts, and thoughts and a little more integration between the parcels somehow, I, I think that, that's something that the commission has looked at before and has supported in other instances where it was warranted and justified. And, and I also struggle with the fact that the use permit, and I know that wasn't the applicant's choice, but the, the use permit is not part of this application, not part of this review. It makes it very difficult to review a zoning case if we can't also look at the use permit in conjunction with this case. And so my recommendation is something that I would support, is I don't feel comfortable making a decision tonight, nor do I feel comfortable making recommended stipulations to have the applicant try and address, because I don't think that we are at a point where we can even draft those stipulations and know what we want and what would work in order for it to move forward, at least in my mind. And so my recommendation would be to continue it to next month and to bring the use permit, this general plan and the zoning, or, and the zoning case and the, the use permit together as one. That, I think, gives the applicant a little more time to review the comments received tonight, make, if possible, make some design changes to the plan, and bring it back forward to us to see if what they think that they can agree to is palatable to us and makes sense in this particular instance. And then we can review it and, and make a recommendation based off of that. But for now, my, I, I don't feel comfortable pushing this off to anybody else. I don't feel comfortable making generic comments related to design and integration to have the staff and council ferret out in the next three weeks. I don't think that that's fair. And I also think that we've been solely focused right now on the multifamily, that we haven't even paid two minutes of time on the commercial aspect of this. And so I think we're a little distracted with the, the multifamily residential, of course, because this is, you know, the biggest component, I think, of this project. But I think that that also merits a little bit of, of review, even though it's regional commercial. So that, in essence, is, is where I stand. Mr. Gilbert?
We are convinced with your logic and would be agreeable to a short continuance along the lines you have designated.
Fabulous. Thank you.
Not our first choice.
Of course not. And normally, we don't recommend continuances, and we certainly don't want to move forward with a negative recommendation either. So, again, that was just my two cents. I'm not making a motion or suggesting that my fellow commissioners agree with that approach either, but...
You know, I, I very much agree that, that we're not in a position to give recommendations pertaining to design, only the general concept, that it seems kind of wholly felt here, that it really is just an integration issue and not, not so much the use. It seems like that's fair. So I concur with that. We'd love to give you an opportunity to take another look at this. We appreciate your timeline, though, and, and understand you've got deals in the works. But, but it appears as though the outcome tonight might be a negative, and I don't know if that's the best way to head to council, so...
Agreed. Commissioner Blazer?
Thank you. I don't, I don't disagree with anything that has been said this evening. I think that multifamily use is, is a great use for that, that location. I do think it's important that we view the issue through, through the lens or the paradigm that it's now its own parcel, and we need to consider that. And I, I think we're all considering that. But I think it's important that we don't make things too difficult because of what was proposed earlier or what was approved several years ago. It's a completely different part, project. It's a completely different development and parcel, frankly. And I would support a continuance based on everything that's been said.
And I, I just want to point out, too, that I, I agree with that thought process. I think, though, that because the applicant is requesting an RC, that makes it inherently more difficult, especially with the standards that we have within RC. If it was a straight multifamily case, it might be a little bit different, because we don't have the integration questions or requirements that make it, or require it to integrate within the rest of the, the project. That would then, in essence, be its own standalone project, which is viewed completely differently than this particular project is right now with this request. So I think, unfortunately, although we'd like to see it maybe as a separate parcel, right now, it's part of the RC, which is part of the overall parcel, which, and our standards are there, and we have to review it based on the standards that we've approved and are part of the code.
Agreed.
Any further comments? Do I have a recommended motion? Commissioner Sipple?
I move to continue Z 13 dash 08 to our October meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Sipple, a second by Commissioner Cavney. All those in favor? Any opposed? Passaged unanimously. And I'd also suggest that to staff, we'd like to see the use permit at the same time. Thank you. No, that's perfect. Okay, moving on to agenda item number 18, GP 14 dash 08 and the companion zoning case, Z 14 dash 18, Whitfield Nursery. It's a request for minor general plan amendment to change land use classification of approximately 2.2 acres, located north of the northwest corner of Guadalupe and Cooper Roads, from residential zero to one to general commercial, along with a companion zoning case requesting rezoning from SF 35 to GC and to modify some of the development standards. And with that, we'll invite Mr. Jordan Feld.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the planning commission. I will attempt to remember to speak loudly into the microphone. Thank you for reading the request into the record, the general plan amendments, as well as the rezoning. The subject properties are 2.2 acres, generally located north of the northwest corner of Guadalupe. Put up the aerial here. Excuse me, and Cooper. You can see the two parcels here, surrounded by the blue hash line. I'll, I'll just skip through most of this information. We went through it during the study session. Nothing has changed relative to the baseline conditions. The proposed deviations, just this afternoon, the applicant did contact staff to talk about potential changes to their proposed deviations. After some discussion, the, the applicant is going to stay with the proposed deviations as we previously discussed.
We're still having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Normally, I'm told I'm too loud.
Is this fan on back here? Because we're really hot.
I have lots of fans. They follow me everywhere. Oh, yeah. Easy one. So this is a familiar graphic, just showing the, the standards in place in the GC zoning district that the applicant is seeking. One thing to point out on this graphic that I think I probably skipped over, the arrows with the various dimensions, the 210 on the west, the 200, and the 175, and map center north there, those are the distances to the backs of the residencies adjacent to the subject parcels. And just to give you an idea of how far the actual houses are from this property, as a way of being fair about the compatibility of a nursery use in this particular setting. I'll quickly go through staff's recommendation. The, I guess I'll defer a lot of my time to the applicant, who has a presentation as well. But I do want to go over staff's recommendation very quickly, and then I guess, you know, speak to some, I guess what I view as the, the matter of facts of this case. So the applicant's proposed several deviations, as we discussed at the study session. The majority of these, you know, arguably acceptable, or at least perhaps not as extreme as been requested, but room for negotiation in terms of the nursery use specifically and the deviations that were requested. Staff has not had success in, you know, negotiating or finding that sweet spot for these deviations and locking them in through the zoning. So as it stands, staff's recommendation is to approve the rezoning and the general plan amendment as requested, except for the two pad deviations that staff is recommending, and, and the balance of the deviations being requested, staff is not recommending. So the two deviations that staff is supportive of, the access of the residential lot north of the subject, through the subject, that will create a safer traffic condition. So unique to this situation, staff is supportive of that. Secondly, the reduction of the internal setbacks from a, you know, from a commercial parcel to another commercial parcel, staff is supportive of that. The applicant is going to speak to several issues. My, I would guess, these have to do with the compatibility of the nursery with the surrounding neighborhood. And, and there's no matter of debate, at least in my mind. I will stipulate that the, the three neighbors enjoy the nursery use and find that use compatible with their large lot residential uses. In fact, I spoke to two of the three adjoining neighbors. They said so much to me during these conversations. When I asked these two neighbors, how do you feel about the property redeveloping for another commercial use, something more intense, something that has less landscaping, obviously, something more like a conventional suburban retail use? I said, if that was to occur, would you still be supportive of an organic hedge with no landscape setback beyond that? And the answer was, no. No. If the property was to redevelop, they would want a 40-foot landscape setback. They would want a solid wall between, between their properties and that future development. So then the question becomes, does rezoning to GC and deviating from those standards allow the opportunity the opportunity for the site to put those standards in place if the property redevelops? The answer is, "No, it does not." That is a variance that you can achieve that outcome by. We have advised the applicant that deviation through rezoning will not allow for that, I guess, Pareto optimal solution to occur. The variance perhaps would, although certainly there's risk. We don't guarantee that a variance will be approved, but I think we've heard, you know, both report from staff and the commission's own discussion, there seems a likelihood that these variances would make sense, specific to the nursery use, and that's exactly what a variance does. It ties a adjustment or deviation to the use itself. So I guess, in summarizing my points, it's not arguable that the nursery is relatively compatible with the adjacent large lot residential. I'm not arguing that the neighborhood is generally okay with the nursery as it stands today. I believe that the applicant can easily point to different nurseries throughout our region where there is less than a 40-foot landscape setback. And I believe that the applicant has lots of things going on with the town right now that are informative and, in one way, shape, or another, may be useful towards this discussion. But at the end of the day, none of it has any specific bearing on the question at hand, and that is, the use today is legally nonconform, or, excuse me, illegally nonconforming. To mitigate that condition, it must be rezoned to GC, and to ensure that any future development is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, the GC standards must remain in place. If the applicant chooses to seek a variance after the fact or concurrently with the rezoning and general plan amendments, and those standards are deviated, those standards are then tied to the use, the nursery itself, and if the nursery redevelops, those standards in the GC district, which are there because GC district allows a slew of intense commercial uses, would be required. So with that, as I said, I want to defer as much time as I can to the applicant. I'm happy to answer any questions now, or we can certainly wait till after the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Any questions for staff? Okay, we'll go ahead and invite up the applicant. If you can give your name and city of residence for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Brian Blake. My residence is in Phoenix, but my nursery's been in Gilbert since 1983. Long time ago. Now, I moved to Gilbert whenever I went to that corner, it was an alfalfa field. There was approximately 10,000 people lived in Gilbert at the time, and I went to that corner because it looked like a good corner to grow trees on, to sell them to the neighborhood. And I saw as the neighborhoods were developing, the town was developing, it would be a good place to do business in a friendly community. Within a few months, I was cited by the town of Gilbert, and they said, "Mr. Blake, you can't have this nursery here. This nursery requires commercial zoning." And so we were ready to go to a hearing on the whole matter at that time. And on the way to the hearing, the town's attorney said to me, "Brian, you know, if you'd like to rezone it, we won't have any objection to it, and it'll be fine. You can rezone this corner parcel." So on her, you know, well, basically on her desire and also our desire to get along with the town, we hired Udl, David Udl, from Udl-Shumway, to rezone the property. That time, it cost me about $10,000 to rezone the property, and we went through zoning change and rezone the property. Now, at that time, I had leased the property as well from the Cooley's, who owned a significant amount of property at that point in that part of town. So in that, when we rezoned it the first time, what we ended up doing is giving up 27,000 square feet of property to put a landscape border around the corner. I spent $50,000 in 1983, when I was 22-years-old, to landscape the property and get the parking lot, all in compliance with the town. So we continued on with our nursery. We had a nice business there. We had a great relationship with the town. We came along in about 1990, and they decided to widen the roads, which was very detrimental to our business, but we lived through it, and we got past that point. And then in about 1999, Jeff Cooley came to me and said, "Brian, would you like to lease the property behind my house, which is next door in the back pasture? The guy's going to take the horse out, and if you'd like to lease him, I'd be happy to lease him to you." So I said, "Sure, Jeff, I'd like to lease him from you." So Jeff went to the town, got permission for us to lease those properties, hired Udl-Shumway, the same attorney that I went through the zoning process with, to draft the lease for us, and we leased those two parcels. And that's the two parcels we're looking at rezoning today. There's also another parcel that sits further north, we'll talk about in a minute. So that was in 1999, 2000, we leased these parcels, and we put nursery products on them. And from 2000 until 2005, when Jeff Cooley came to me and said, "Mr. Blake, would you like to buy that parcel? And I'll sell you all four parcels that we own there, the original nursery, the two other adjoining parcels, the one in the back without the house, the one with the house, and the house next door. And if you'd like to buy those, I'll sell them to you, and I'll give you the first option to buy them because you've been a good tenant for a long time." At that point, I'd been on the property, you know, roughly 22-years, and I hadn't had a complaint from the town of Gilbert in 22-years. So I purchased the property, and we continued on. Three years later, this is 2008, I receive a complaint that was from one neighbor on that property. And one neighbor's complaint started the city's actions against us. Now, we're not going to go into all, I don't want to spend your time to go into all those actions tonight, and I know we've been through Mr. Gilbert, who was kind of taking a long time, and he had a big case, and this is a little, you know, somewhat simpler case, but it's really important to me. So what happened since then, I've been basically in court with the town of Gilbert since 2008. They come to me in 2013, and Carlos and I attend the meeting. We're the only ones invited to the meeting, really, and it's a meeting that they're going to do some street changes, a major street project right there on the corner of Cooper and Guadalupe. And they tell us that, you know, "We're going to do this project, and we're going to take some of your property, and we're not going to basically allow you any driveways under your property." And that was kind of the end of conversation, one meeting. This was approximately May or June of 2013. I thought the project died. I never heard another word from anybody about the project until, in a litigation talk with the town and with Linda, I find out, "No, the project's going forward." And in fact, this project that they're doing, and it's going to go forward, they're changing, and they're going to widen the roads, they're going to put in new railroad crossings, they're going to take a considerable amount of our property, and in doing so, it's going to really force us to change our zoning on the other two pieces and to move our operation around. And we're going to be condensed. But the odd part about it is the traffic counts on Guadalupe are 40% less than they were in 2006. The traffic counts on Cooper Road are the same as they've been for over 10-years. So this is a really important project to them for some reason, but I don't know why. Especially on Guadalupe, we had traffic counts in 2005 that were 27,000 cars, and they're down to 18,000 today. And we all know why that is. You're here in the Planning Commission, and, you know, you see that the 202 went through, and we have the 101. So all this crosstown traffic that we used to have on Guadalupe is now gone. You know, would it help to put another lane on Cooper Road? Sure it would. And that traffic there every afternoon's backed up. So I try and deal with the town, and they say basically, "Okay, so here you've got this piece in the corner. The only way you can have access is to take your house out that sits through the north, and if we can go to the piece of the house." Yeah, so you can see the property they showed. You can see the house that sits right in the middle of it. So for me to get access to this property now, if I'm going to make any kind of a left-hand turn off of Cooper Road, I have to take the house out. And not only I have to take the house out, but I have to take the house out, and I have to repave and reconfigure my entire parking lot, and I have to change all of my landscaping. Now, the town's not paying me or reimbursing me to do any of this. And what the town is asking me to do, now that I have to rezone commercial to allow that driveway in, they're asking me to give them 40-feet buffer all the way around the edge of the property. And that goes, as you can see, up toward our neighbors in the north, and of course, it goes on the far end, too, in the back, and the neighbors to the west. So by giving them this property, again, or basically they're taking it, I can't use it. You know, a landscape buffer area is of no use to a piece of property. And we're going to show you some pictures here in just a minute of properties around Gilbert and how they're maintained and what they really do. But you're talking about a landscape buffer area, and as they pointed out, you've got a house that's 175-feet away, a house that's 200-feet away, and a house that's 210-feet away. So it's really not the norm, you know, to have a house set up that big. These are big lots. These are fun lots. It's a fantastic neighborhood. We have some of the greatest neighbors in Gilbert that live there, and they've lived there for a long time. You know, if you take our neighbor that's to the west, he's lived there since 1984 or '05. You take our neighbor that's in the middle, he's lived there, you know, for longer than that, since the early '70s, probably sometime. Our next neighbor built his house there in 1998. So we're not talking about neighbors that haven't lived together very compatibly for a long time. And to that matter, we're talking about neighbors who have pledged their support for our project. And they understand, you know, and I've talked with him at length, I was there last night, and I met with two of the neighbors last evening. And when I met with the neighbors last evening, we discussed the fact that, you know, it's a nursery now. I can't guarantee that forever. Someday, I'm going to die. You know, but right now, I'm 53-years-old. I moved in here when I was 22-years-old. I don't plan on selling it. If you look up the history of my nurseries around town, I have yet to sell a nursery around town, period. You know, I've been here, this is the third nursery I ever opened. I'm not opening anymore, but I like this location. It's great in Gilbert. We've been part of the community for a long time, and we've had, you know, great community support. And until 2008, we had great town support as well. The letter, let's see, I got a copy of that one. I got one right here. So basically, the letter I had them sign last night says, "I R E support Silver Canyon Nurseries rezoning and general plan amendment at the 860 South Cooper Road and the rear lot located behind the property. I don't want the block wall constructed behind my yard. I have seen photos of the city's hedge, of the citrus hedge, and feel that it will be more in keeping with the agricultural nature of our neighborhood. I have been a neighbor of the nursery for the past 14-years and find the nursery to be a compatible use and see no reason for the required 40-foot landscape setback behind the hedge." Now, what city staff did when they called the neighbors, they didn't explain to the neighbors that there was a 40-foot setback. They explained to them that they had the option of a block wall. And I don't know if that's the support, and that was really explained in any kind of length. You know, I was at their house last night until 9:00. And we have one of the neighbors here who may or may not want to speak to you about it, but, you know, we're a neighborhood. You know, we're people that have flood irrigation, we live on a corner, and I'm not bringing this application because I want to. The only reason why I'm bringing this application is because the town has forced me to, because the only way I can have access to my property is to rezone it. As far as the zoning violations, they're still in court, and I really do expect to prevail, and that's going to go on for some time. As far as the property, we've been trying to work with the town. I've had over 50 meetings with the town since February, and other than the 50 meetings, I've spent probably another 50-days in conversations with them. I've had to pay the rezoning fees and hire, you know, professional help to get the zoning process done, which has cost me over $50,000 to date. And I'm going to have to lose a house. I'm going to have to re-landscape and rebuild the whole parking lot in front of the nursery, and so far, they're offering me zero compensation for that. They're also taking the property that I have along Cooper Road, along Guadalupe Road, and I've offered a proposal to them to move the water back in the back, put the water retention back in the back, and take less of our frontage. So far, they're not willing to do that. I went to a condemnation hearing with the town this morning at 9:30, and fortunately, it was postponed, but I don't know what their actions are going to be, how they're going to prevail, what's going to happen. I would assume that this project's going to go through because town projects usually do. They haven't got permission from the railroad yet to build the crossings, and that's part of the corporation commission, so that's something they have to get separately. And we made a few proposals to them that are acceptable to the neighbors that are different than the standard 40-foot landscape setback. And I'd like to show you what the 40-foot standard landscape setbacks look like. So we've got the... Oh, yeah. First off, we talked about the back of nurseries and nurseries. I own three nurseries in Phoenix, or two in Phoenix, actually, three in Phoenix and one in Gilbert. There's probably retail nurseries in the valley that are what I would consider retail nurseries, agricultural businesses. There's probably 50 of us, okay? There's only two in Gilbert. There's AMP, who's over on baseline, and us in Guadalupe. We've both been there for a long time. And if you look at AMP, they have zero landscape setbacks. In fact, we've got a picture that we can show you that if you look through their nursery, you can see their neighbors right behind the fence. You know, this is the nursery standard for every nursery in the state of Arizona. There's nobody that has a setback on any nursery anywhere. But taking aside the fact that we're a nursery, this is a commercial zoning application. So what I want to do is I want to show you what commercial zoning applications and commercial zoning setbacks look like in the town of Gilbert, especially right in our neighborhood. So our next picture is going to show you, let's go back, that's the nursery at AMP. Okay, this is the Sam's Club parking lot, and that's the required setback as far as having the eight-foot wall with the trees growing on it and the neighbors to the back. If you look at the next photo from the neighbor's side, you can see, you can see the huge block building back there, the wall, and you can see right through it. If you look at the next picture, this is behind the Frye's store on baseline, and you can see what wonderful landscaping they have behind the Frye's store and all the fantastic screening and how the two-story neighbors can't see the commercial building. You know, it's very clear that, you know, there's really no buffer, no screening there provided at all. And if we go to the next one, which is a new one, this is the A-Z Rental Yard on baseline. An A-Z Rental Yard on baseline, this is their perimeter landscaping outside the wall, and you can see it's mostly wall, but on the inside, this is their 40-foot landscape setback. And that's all the protection it provides. You've got the wall on the outside, but it actually offers no buffer whatsoever by the landscape that's put on the inside of this landscape setback that's required by the town. What we're proposing to do is what we do in Paradise Valley. You know, I work with a lot of people and sell a lot of trees. That's my business. But let's show you the adjacent properties first. You got used to seeing the aerial view enough, and there's our main residence. We have the Phelps, the Thompsons, the Schwartz, and then I own the piece next door to the other part of the nursery. This is the backyard of the Schwartz. As you can see, they already have a big hedge. You can see the difference in buffer that they already have existing, you know, now, versus any of the landscape setbacks that you've seen in the pictures before this. Now, this is the view right here of the Thompsons residence, and you can see they have an open pasture. They had a horse back here until about two-years ago that the kids at the nursery loved to come and pet. And what this does, it shows you kind of the view through the nursery, but it's a nice green background. You're looking at far more landscaping here than you are in any of the landscape required 40-foot setbacks. Now, here's the citrus hedges. And this not only should be good for us, this should be good for the town and a lot of other instances. The difference with the citrus hedge is, is that we're going to plant trees that can grow 15-foot tall on about a 3'4" center. So this is a hedge that's been installed. This is a one-year-old hedge. That's basically what the hedge looks like when it's planted. This is a three-year-old hedge planted in Paradise Valley, happens to be in about a $5-million house. And if you notice, they put the wall on the outside. They kept the hedge to the inside so that their property is greener and nicer, and it's got a better appearance than any wall would ever have. This is another, this is a very large house in Paradise Valley on Mockingbird Road, and this hedge now, you can see, has been in for about five-years. It's approximately 14 or 15-foot tall, provides a solid dense screen. And one thing I wanted to show you...
It's a little sample of what Sour Orange is. Because the last time we were here, there was a question. Do you know? The question was security. What kind of security do you get from a hedge versus the wall?
Well, if you notice this person that has a $10-million house in Paradise Valley, they have a little short wrought iron fence about four-foot tall. Where does their security come from? Not a wall. It comes from the hedge. That hedge is better security than any wall you can build. You know, you can fill that little section of a branch, try to go through that hedge. Nobody will. Havelinas won't go through it, people won't go through it, robbers won't go through it. You know, to cut that hedge down and go through it would be tough. You want to go over a wall, you throw a ladder, go right over it. Try that with a hedge. It's not going to happen. So I'm asking for these deviations because it makes sense. And the biggest reason why is because I'm losing 40% of my property to the setbacks, and I don't want to give that away. But I just want to show you a little bit more about Sour Orange because there was a question, too, last time I was here, about how long they live and how they last. So if you see the next picture, that was a 10-year-old hedge. This hedge right here is planted in front of my grandfather's house in 1950. And if you could, you know, you can see it's still a 10-foot hedge and happy. Now, if you wanted to grow it that tall, that's my grandfather's adobe house, and that's one of the plants, the hedge, they decided to let grow tall. So if you want to have a screen that's 25-feet tall, or if you want to have a screen that's 14-feet tall, you're going to put in a denser, better, more secure, safer, more sound-resistant barrier by putting this hedge in than any other application I've ever seen put in the town of Gilbert. I'm not sure that we're going to have any opposition here with this. You know, my...
We do.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Well, if we do, let's go to another picture then. Just roll on through to the picture we got, the neighbors. That's a nursery picture. Okay, back up one. Okay, 1,630-feet. Oops, there you go. Okay. If there's opposition here, that neighbor lives 1,630-feet away from my property. You know, about a third of a mile. And he doesn't have any access to any streets that abut, adjoining our property whatsoever. If you notice the roads, he's gonna have to go out to Cooper Road and drive around the corner. Now, we had a neighborhood meeting, and I met with the people from the subdivisions all around that came, and they showed up, the homeowners associations, and they had no opposition. The only other person that had moderate opposition, I don't think it's here, was the one who lives right next door. And he's the one who happened to file the complaint back in 2008, but he hasn't filed one since. And we purposely didn't, uh, rezone our other property, which abuts him, so that we wouldn't have a problem in this process.
Well, here's the problem. Right? Um, do we have, I, I know I have a few questions. Is there any other commissioners that have a few questions for the applicant that they'd like to see addressed? I guess I can start, but, um, first, I, I know that you had mentioned in your presentation that you were required to rezone the initial piece when you came in. And originally, you developed, and, um, you weren't, you didn't realize maybe that you needed to have it zoned, and it wasn't zoned appropriately. And so you went through the town's process and you got it zoned appropriately. My question for you is, why would you think that you could expand the use without zoning the property as required in the initial instance?
Because I have nurseries all over this, all over the town, not, not specifically in Gilbert, but I have them located in several locations of Phoenix. I've had them in Glendale, I've had them in, you know, all, all over the valley, basically. And I've never had a problem with zoning before. And the reason why they, I thought the town wanted that front part zoned is because we had the sales of like our chemicals and our little, you know, our little building there. But we have growing nurseries all over the state. I have over 1,000 acres of nurseries. And this is the only one that's zoned commercial. And, and I have them in Phoenix where my grandfather's house is right there, that's a five-acre nursery, that sits right in the middle of our nursery in Glendale. I have one at 264070 Southern Avenue, and I have one at 19th Avenue in Dobbins. And they're all wrote, "Zoned residential." And I believe that the R143 zoning, at the time, whenever I purchased this property, indeed allows nurseries. I think that in the zoning, that we're in compliance. And that's been my contention since 2008, it's my contention today, that we're going to, to court with the town on that contention. So, my belief is that we are in compliance, we've always been in compliance, and I don't think we have a problem with compliance.
Okay. Um, but we have to review what's before us this evening, which is the, the zoning application, the general plan amendment. I think, um, also, I, I know that we had stressed at the last meeting, but, um, the concern isn't necessarily, at least from my perspective, the nursery. Um, I think the concern is if we change the general plan and change the zoning category to make your use compliant, that it then imposes some of the setbacks required in that commercial category. The problem is, again, not your particular use, but that if for some reason you, your use went away, those deviations would run with the land, and any future commercial that were developed would be able to develop in those standards. So while the neighbors might be comfortable with your use as it stands today and with the deviations and the setbacks proposed or existing today, they might not be so comfortable with any commercial, future commercial use that may come in and locate there and have a right, and they have no say-so, and the town has no ability to, to, um, require anything different than what's been approved. And so I think that's the quandary that we're in, and I get the presentation. We're just trying to, I think, at least I'm trying to figure out a way to allow you to operate in a compatible manner such that we don't by right allow future users to enjoy the same benefits as your particular use.
Well, I guess what I'm asking, Madam Chair, is for you to do that. I'm asking you for, basically, to give me those uses because, number one, the property we're rezoning is only 145 feet wide. You know, and, and to take 40 feet off of 145-foot piece of property is a substantial taking, you know, for a use that doesn't serve a purpose. And that's why I went out specifically and took photographs of the standard as it's applied in the town, and the difference that offers to the neighbors versus what the hedge does. The hedge is gonna cost me far more money to install than any of the landscapes that we showed you. You know, the, the hedge, those plants basically, um, are gonna be planted about eight-foot tall in the ground when they go into the ground. We sell them installed for about $250 apiece, and we put them on a four-foot center. I can build a block wall cheaper than I can put the hedge in. You know, and I, and I could put landscaping in behind that block wall cheaper than I can put the hedge in. But the hedge is a superior handling of this neighborhood and this environment, whether I'm there or I die or not. If I'm dead and gone and somebody else comes in there, they decide to build a commercial building, first off, they're gonna have 50-foot building setbacks anyway. So they can't build anything within 50-foot of the, of the property.
That's not true, not if we approve deviations.
No, I'm not asking you to deviate from the setbacks. Pardon? It's 75 feet? I say, we have a 75-foot building setback that's gonna still exist. We're not asking you to deviate from that. So we're not wanting to do anything that's gonna hurt the neighbors. You know, the most important thing to me is I own lots of properties around, I like to have good neighbors. And, and if you look at our neighbors that have supported us, you know, our adjoining neighbors that are right there, you know, they support us. And they support us at every location we have all over. And they support us because we're good neighbors. And if, if they can come in and build a building, that's fine. But that landscaped hedge that's there, if they have liked to, they can grow 25 feet tall, is a far better buffer than what the town standard is. The town standard is the wall and bushes, just like we showed you in the other picture. We're gonna give them a hedge that's full, thick, green, that can grow to 25 feet if they want to. If we wanna hedge it and keep it 15 feet, we can do that. What we'll do is we're gonna maintain the hedge on our side, and I've actually had a couple of neighbors request that we put in fruiting varieties of citrus so they can harvest the fruit on their side. So it's a benefit to both of us. It's just being good neighbors. And it's for the long term, for go-forward development. Somebody comes in there, I die, and they build a building. It has to be 75 feet away from that hedge. And if you look at that hedge compared to any one of those other landscapes that I showed you, they're all to code, that the hedge is superior. I'm giving them more buffer, more sound buffer, more privacy, and better screening.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for the applicant, Vice Chairman?
So, you, you don't wanna, your idea of building both, you, you wouldn't do the hedge and the wall?
No, there's, there's no reason to do the hedge and the wall.
Well, if, if you were not looking at the hedge as a standard, and you, I agree, the hedge in, in a, um, an ideal, uh, utopia, that there's no future person coming with another idea, or someone comes and doesn't hold up the, the, uh, quality that you show us of these trees and, and how that gets taken care of, then, then yes, the hedge is better. Um, but, but the wall is more permanent, and that's more of a reason why, um, the city has gone with something like that as a, a standard. Um, I'd like to see the slide, um, I think it was A&amp;Z Rentals, um, that you had that was a, kind of barren.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. Back, or, any of those, um, any one you wanna pick out of those.
Yeah, any one of those.
Um, what, as your business, stops you from retaining trees and bushes in that area?
In this area?
No, not that one, all the one you show is desolate landscaping, so...
The problem is, the problem is not just my business, okay? The problem is, is my property.
Right.
You know, I, I'm here for two-fold, okay? I'm here for my business, which I operate, which I, I contends always been legal. But the only really reason why I'm here is because the town's doing a condemnation, which I went to court for this morning, and they're taking the front of my property. And I have to put in another driveway. I have to tear a house down. I have to pave the front of my property. But, in order to try to meet the 40-foot landscape setback, you know, I can't, if I die and my kids wanna sell the property, I can't sell the property and enjoy it the way it's been because I have a 40-foot landscape setback. And what I'm saying to you is the landscape setback doesn't make any sense. Now, I understand your question on the wall, but number one, citrus trees live longer than walls. Sour oranges live 600 years. So that hedge, if it's maintained, can be there for, till we're all gone, you know, the whole thing redeveloped, something will happen, who knows what'll happen to the whole neighborhood. That's how long they can actually live. You know, and as far as why we don't wanna put the wall up is because the neighbors don't want it. You know, there's nothing uglier than that wall. You know, you look at that block wall in your backyard, and that's ugly. You know, it's just coyote ugly. You know, I don't have walls anywhere. Those people in Paradise Valley in those $10 million houses that want security don't have walls, they're ugly. You know, they're unattractive. And if you're in a residential neighborhood in the backyard, you know, that's atrocious. You know, go back to the wall behind Frye's.
Right, but that's a commercial property, which is what you're gonna be...
Right, that's a commercial property with your commercial applied landscape.
Right.
Okay, that's it right there. So you're, this is the back wall of Frye's, and that's the neighbors. And that's what they have to look at. You know, these neighbors didn't have the option of somebody putting an ice-in hedge, hedge in for them, that would be, that the, the neighbor's actually gonna have to maintain. Now, these right-ofaways have to be maintained. They have to be maintained by the property owner. You know, I have to maintain the landscape right-ofaways in front of the nursery, I have to maintain them in the back of the nursery. You know, their landscapes, these, I'm required by the city to maintain them. It's not like an option for the, for the property owner not to maintain it. So, would you rather have that, or would you rather have a 15-foot hedge?
Well, the, the issue is there's security from both sides to something like that, and...
But the security, that's a five or six-foot wall. I can jump that eight-foot wall myself, and I'm an old fat guy, okay? A, a kid can jump a nine-foot wall. You know, a wall is no security, that hedge is far more security than a wall is ever gonna be.
Well, I guess that, that's a, a viewpoint from both sides.
Well, until you go through a hedge one time.
I've done it before.
Not sour orange.
You can crawl under it, you can militarily crawl your way through it, if, if that's what you wanted to do.
Well, here's the other thing I was gonna do too with, with the hedge when we put it in, just so I know, Joshua.
Right.
Is that hedge goes up against the fence, the iron fence that you saw in the back of the neighbor's yard already. And so what we're gonna do in that hedge too is we're gonna run V mesh fence. So, that you can't crawl through it, you can't cut your way through it, you know, you really can't get through it. I mean, security-wise, it's more secure than any wall is ever gonna be.
Okay. And I guess, and the last question is the site access. You, you say that you, you have no access to your, to your commercial property without doing, tearing down the home, and so how, I see two access points right now from an aerial photo, so where do those go?
What happening is that, that the town's gonna put a median in the middle of Cooper Road.
Right.
That's gonna go past our nursery. So for any traffic coming from the south, which 90% of our traffic comes from the south because that's where the residential part of, you know, Gilbert's laid out, they'll have to go all, if, if we don't take the house out, they would have to go down to Houston to make a U-turn and come back.
Has traffic looked at that?
Yes, they did. And, you know, and we've been negotiating with traffic, but unfortunately, we just haven't got that far yet. And even though we're in condemnation, we still hold hopes that we can negotiate this with the town.
Thank you.
Further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. We appreciate your input, Mr. Blake. Um, we do have a, a card from a, I'll butcher the first name, is it Payler Udall?
Pacer.
Pacer, sorry. Thank you. Pacer Udall, if you would, I'm sorry? If you could come to the dais and give your name and city of residence for the record, please?
Pacer Udall, I live in Gilbert. Um, I'm in the special community that has these big one-acre lots. Um, I'm related to David Udall, who helped, um, Whitfield Nursery with their zoning. But, and I'm also an attorney, but I hopefully am not as, uh, hard on this council as, or this commission as the previous attorney was. So I, I live in that neighborhood. I think the issues to me are, um, I, I guarantee you that the three streets that are part of this community will always be residential. That, that's just the way it will be. I might not live there, my kids might not live there, Ron Phelps or the Thompsons or anybody that are the, uh, adjoining neighbors, they aren't gonna always live there, you know, right? But it will always be residential. This area will now always be commercial if, if, if the zoning, you know, you know, takes place. And as it's been said and talked about in some questions, and even in the study, right, I, I guarantee you that at some point, it will not be owned by Whitfield Nursery, you know, right? And there will not be a nursery there. And so we can't make decisions on what's gonna happen. I mean, so I'm a business owner, I've had to comply with all sorts of commercial and zoning, you know, you know, things. I'm also a residential, you know, owner, and I just added on to my house. And I had to comply with all the setbacks and all the, and go through all the, the issues with the, with the town as well. I mean, that's just, that's why you have zoning, that's why things work. There's compliance with the general plan and policies, and it says Whitfield Nursery blends well in the adjacent large lot residential while serving a larger regional market. And that's maybe true while it's a nursery, but when it's not a nursery, it won't blend well, you know, right? When it's the antennas that, you know, maybe get moved down there, another shuff steel or some, you know, uh, other high-end commercial, you know, you know, development, then it's not gonna blend well. At some point, it will not be a nursery. But it will always be residences on these, this unique, there's, there's, these are pockets, they're unique as nurseries. These, these large irrigated lots, you, you know, right? The, so, so I guess my thought is, just to try and stick with the few minutes of time that we're supposed to have, um, you know, one, I, I guess if, I think there's other kinds of, you know, we're, we're looking for variances or distinctions or, 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 you know, or, or exceptions, you know, why can't there be an exception on the, the zoning? Why does it have to be general commercial? Why can't it be community commercial or whatever the step down is to blend more in there? I mean, maybe there's rules and, and, and regulations or things that don't, don't allow that, but that would be my first choice. But if it's gonna be commercial, if it's gonna be general commercial that will allow anything virtually, um, and at some point, it could be anything, um, then, then I guess, then my second position would be, um, in terms of the, the zoning, is that, is that we have to stick to, to, to the, to the requirements. At some point, someone, if it's a new owner, a hedge, a hedge could last a long time. I mean, I grow trees, I've grown up with orchards and things like this, I grew up on a farm. But if you don't have water, if you don't irrigate it, if you don't take care of it, if the new owner comes in and says, "I don't like the hedge," then it's gone, and then everything that's been decided in the zoning, that can't be changed by Gerald Thompson or Ron Phelps or anybody, or Pacer Udall, because it's already been set in stone with the, you know, with the zoning. Um, so to me, you know, that, that, it's an, it's unfortunate that, that we find ourselves in this situation. I'm not opposed to businesses, I'm not opposed to, um, you know, unfortunately, this is the piece of land. I imagine with condemnation and taking comes the city having to pay, you know, for that. Um, I mean, that's, that's, that's what, uh, no one likes that, but, but that's, that's what happens sometimes. Um, and, but those aren't the issues. The issues for the planning commission are, are zoning and, and keeping requirements. And, and we can't have it both ways. I couldn't have it both ways as a business owner, I couldn't have it both ways as a, as a residential owner and wanting to add another, you know, more square footage, I had to have setbacks and other things. Um, I mean, that's just, that, that's, that's what makes it work, um, you know, you know, in zoning. And so, um, I guess that's all I would say. In conclusion, that, that it's, there'll always be residences on those three roads to the north of the nursery. There'll always be these large, um, you know, lots, and, but in this, and then now this will always be commercial, and, and if there's nothing to protect any future owner, you And if there's nothing to protect any future owner, you know, right, any planning or anything like this, I mean, because there's no guarantee that the hedge would stay, right? As soon as it stops being water, as soon as it starts to be maintained. I mean, some would argue that right across the street, all the oleanders that grow 20-foot tall and it's spread into other people's, you know, I hate oleanders, right? Hate sour oranges, you know, right? Much whether there'd be other kind of oranges or, you know, you could make a, I guess someone could stand up and say, "We could plant ocotillo and make a living hedge of those too," right? But the, the, the point is, is that now when things grow in, grow into neighbors' yards, now they're forced to maintaining and, you know, and doing these things. But worse, when, when something else comes in, then the hedge dies, then it's, then it's dead. And now we're left with nothing, you know, nothing there. So I look at it more long-term, you know, I think we can get caught up in looking at, you know, right in the here and now, but that's why you plan and that's why you have zoning. And that's, that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Udall. Is there anybody here wishing to speak on this matter? Okay, with that, we'll bring it back. Does the applicant have anything further you'd like to add?
You know, I just think it's clear that we're proposing something that's a little different and new, but I want to make sure that it's understood that we're not asking for any change in the building setbacks. You know, we're not asking, so if a commercial project does come in, if I do die, and someday I will, you know, I won't own the property forever. My children might, my grandchildren might, but I won't. And maybe their grandchildren will. You know, I'm on my grandfather's property that he bought in 1945. That's where my first nursery is. I get offers on that thing for $5 and $10 million all the time. I won't sell it. I'll die on it. You know, I've got citrus groves and things I grow. I'm going to own it as long as I can. But regardless of however long I own it, you know, good planning is good planning. And this hedge type of a treatment versus the standard landscape is superior. And we're not asking for any deviations in the setbacks from buildings. So if a building does go in there, if I do die and somebody comes and builds a building, they're still going to have to be 75 feet off the property line, which, you know, is going to put the building basically off of these lots. And these lots are only 145 feet wide. And I really wish when you're taking in consideration, you consider these lights are only 145 feet wide. And I'm getting crushed on the other side of the nursery. I've given up land on that side too. And our nursery that I started off on five acres before, and then I bought more land to make seven and a half, and I gave a half away, you know, I don't want to lose another half acre. I mean, it's just, it's over a half an acre just for the landscape setback. And we're putting in a setback and a buffer that, as you can see in the pictures, is far superior than any other landscape buffer that's put in. And it'll have to be maintained the same as any backyard in a landscape would behind a wall. And the reason we're not putting a wall is because the neighbors specifically do not want a wall. And as fact, as Mr. Udall's suggestions, and we've talked with the neighbors, these won't necessarily all be sour orange. You know, I have neighbors, we're going to be sour orange on our piece, but down in the back, I have one of the neighbors, they want to put in some naval oranges, you know. So they, we can mix different kinds of citrus, but we'll have the same effect. We're still going to have a 15-foot-tall green screen that's with a wire fence through the middle of it. You can't get through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Does staff have anything further they'd like to add? Mr. Feld?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Staff would only note that the landscape setbacks, the 50-foot setback for having enclosed commercial activity adjacent to residential doesn't have anything to do with the building setback. The applicant's absolutely right. It has to do with outdoor activity next to a residential parcel, which can create externalities, obviously. If you're back there maintaining a nursery or, you know, worst-case scenario, more intense commercial operation, the types of outdoor activities a more intense commercial operation might have exposed to that adjacent neighborhood, that is what creates the problem. So once again, staff stipulates, you know, almost everything that was discussed and the evidence that's been provided, there's no doubt that this use could be compatible with reduced standards, given the situation today. That's not at question. At question is what happens if the use changes and what types of outdoor activities would be located right on the property line or immediately adjacent to the property line? And to what degree does the zoning standards that the community has created for the G C district, those are there for a reason. And so G C uses need to provide those uses to ensure some minimum level of compatibility.
Thank you, Mr. Feld. Question? Vice Chairman?
I had a quick question. Want you to get your computer reset? So you're saying the building setback itself is, would be 50 feet and, or is it 75 feet?
Seventy-five.
The building setback, I believe, is 75 feet. They're also asking for a deviation that basically says, any...
Outdoor commercial areas?
Unenclosed activity must be setback 50 feet from the residential property line.
Okay.
So lots of commercial uses have lots of outdoor activities. Are these things we want closer than 50 feet?
Thank you.
Has it been, and I think it has, so I think I know the answer to this, but I want to confirm. Has it been, I noticed that there's really no change in the application from last month's presentation to this month's presentation?
Correct, Madam Chairman. This afternoon, the applicant did discuss increasing the landscape setback to five feet with staff. And that discussion didn't really go beyond any kind of conceptual discussion.
Has there been any discussions with the applicant on alternative methods of seeking approval for these deviations?
Yes, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. Staff on several occasions has advised the applicant and the applicant's rep that the variance process would, again, be the most applicable for the situation in hand because the deviations that could be approved through the variance would run with the use. And as we've stated, the neighborhood appears to be fine with these deviations if they are specific to a nursery use. The legal mechanism to achieve that is in fact a variance.
Okay. Any further questions for staff? Okay, thank you, Mr. Feld. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the dais for discussion. Here are my two cents based on what I'm hearing from the applicant and from staff. I feel for the applicant. I feel like it's a unfortunate circumstance that they're going through. I think that it's somewhat of a hardship. I think some of it may be a little self-imposed, but I think that's maybe the nature of the business. I think that right now, the business is probably a good use adjacent to the existing single-family residences. I get the applicant's reasons in requesting the reductions, as noted in the staff report. And with that being said, I understand that specifically with the nursery use in mind. However, I don't feel comfortable approving those deviations by right in accordance with what's presented to us tonight and what is before us to make a decision on. My recommendation, and something that I would feel more comfortable with personally, would be to approve the general plan amendment, to approve the zoning case, and approve only a couple of the deviations requested. And then maybe suggest to the applicant to seek the necessary variances through the variance process such that, again, we don't know what the outcome of that variance hearing will be. But what we do know is that that is a mechanism and a way to approve those deviations and limit them to specific use, such that if the nursery were to ever go away and another commercial use would come in, those deviations would not be permitted to be utilized. I mean, they would run with the use. Is that correct, counsel?
Yes, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay. So with that, my recommendation would be to, as I stated, to approve the general plan, approve the zoning case with only a couple of the deviations as supported by staff, and suggest to the applicant to go through the variance process to receive the additional variances requested as part of this case in that process, such that it provides the town some comfort and gets, hopefully, hopefully, the applicant what the applicant is searching for. It's just another mechanism and a way to do that. So, is there further discussion? Thoughts? Commissioner Cavney?
So I too empathize with Mr. Blake and what you're going through. It sounds like it's been a long road and it is really unfortunate. I, I mirror the chairman woman's comments. Very difficult situation to let these rights run with the land because, like you pointed, I mean, we all, we all at some point will have our land moved on and who knows what will go there. So I think, I think your suggestion, Chairman Whitman, is a good idea. Hate to put the applicant through a whole lot more in the processing, but I think you'll be able to get all you need with your nursery and still allow that land to have the proper commercial application in the future. So I would concur with that recommendation and would invite that. What, Chairman, what couple of very, deviations did you think we ought to, we ought to allow at this juncture with the zoning case?
As specified in the staff report, I think that the building side yard setback, I think, is supported by staff, the reduction from 20 feet to zero feet. I think that the, the use of commercially zoned property to provide vehicular access to residential use would be approved. But I think that is the remainder of them.
Mr. Phil, can you show me that side yard setback on the graphic, the green, purple, and, yeah, there was a third color too? I just want to make sure I understand that. I very much agree with the access residential across the commercial. I think that's a logical thing to allow, given what the applicant's willing to do in moving the home. So the side yard is that green, right?
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Cavney, the deviation, the first deviation that's supported by staff, the reduction of the internal side yard. It helps if I point it out. So the green is the perimeter landscape setback. What we're talking about would be buildings in this area would not have a setback from this line. So essentially, you know, the greater nursery is seven acres. Five-acre piece plus the 2.2-acre residential parcels subject zoning request. So essentially, you know, they operate today as a single development. They will continue to operate as a single development. There's no reason to require additional setbacks for...
Internally, right, right. So the only long-term issue there is if, when this transfer of the property to a different use, they split those parcels, they sell them individually, that would perhaps create a problem then, right?
In the sense that that future user didn't understand that that setback had been deviated, and then for whatever reason couldn't meet, you know, there's additional building code requirements for building separation. So if the parcels were to develop separately, the building code, not the land development code, is going to have separate requirements for how close those buildings can be and the construction materials that would be utilized if they literally are one inch from each other.
Okay, so probably not a long-term problem then. Okay, okay. Well, then I concur very much with Chairman Whitman's proposal.
And I think, as I look back on it, I think that's exactly what staff has proposed in their stipulations. So I think it makes it pretty easy.
Well, one question on that. Is the, that setback also to the residential side or just the internal commercial side?
Internal commercial.
Okay, perfect.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
Yes.
It says that the setback deviation applies to non-residential. So it's specified that way.
Perfect.
All right, so is there further discussion, comments, possible motion? Commissioner Sipple? I don't want to make the motion. Oh, gosh, okay. Well, let's see. Recommended motion. Let's do this. I will, I guess, as the chairman, make a motion. I move to recommend to the town council approval of GP 1408, a minor general plan amendment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Chairman Whitman, a second by Vice Chairman Ayler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. And for the zoning case, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the town council for Z 14-18 as requested, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Do I have a second?
Second.
Because I have a motion by Chairman Whitman and a second by Vice Chairman Ayler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you.
Staff appreciates the difficult decision, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that it is a pleasure to work with Mr. Blake. His enthusiasm and obviously his commitment to the town and his business is commendable, but...
We certainly would like to keep updated. So if you could update us on the progress and Mr. Blake's hopeful success through the variance process.
Absolutely.
That would be great. Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda item number 20, it's Z 14-15A. It's a request to amend the town of Gilbert land development code for a lot of amendments. So I'm not going to go through those. But with that, Mr. Feld, are you presenting for Linda?
Unless the planning manager would like to.
Okay, we have you listed, but on the agenda.
I try to give out her number whenever I can.
All right.
So very quickly, none of the 10 items have changed substantively since the study session discussion. So I'll just quickly jump through those. Again, this is batch A of our land development code cleanup. And this is not at all the presentation that I meant to fire up here. My apologies. So again, now this list should look familiar to you. So this is just a quick snapshot of the 10 individual text amendments that are covered under Z 14-15A1. I'll basically hit on the items where there was any discussion at the study session. This first one, extending the hours of operation for medical marijuana facilities. Some discussion as to whether or not any time extension was warranted. I guess it was staff's feeling that perhaps that was a minority opinion of the planning commission, but certainly if there's additional discussion on that point, staff is...
I would like to pull that out as recommended denial.
To clarify, bring A1 out of the batch.
No change in the hours, yes.
Jumping forward, there was some discussion as to, you know, how can we best clarify where we measure the drive-through setback from residential? It seemed clear through the discussion that just, simply calling out that we're talking about the actual drive-through aisle having a 50-foot buffer from any residential would be the appropriate terminology. So that's what we showed. Again, these little arrows indicate where PC has had considerable input. This next one, A4, had to do with adding accessory retail uses in a business park or light industrial setting, or industrial setting, I should say. The question was more formulaic. How do we get to that 10% or 20% or whatever it is? You know, is it, is it the gross square footage of all structures that contribute to the principal use? Is it the primary structure that occupies the principal use regardless of whatever, you know, tertiary structures contribute to the principal use? So we go through the definitions and it is, I think, fairly clear how we define a principal use and how we define gross floor area. And then in the staff report as well, there's an indication of how we ask businesses to describe their use. So between those three things, planning staff is able to fairly easy come up with that number of, you know, what is the gross floor area that we're taking that percentage off of? Pretty clear direction from the planning commission on this one. Do not allow freeway signs or tower signs in residential districts even for non-residential uses. So for the reasons included in the staff report and the planning commission's recommended changes that have been incorporated into the staff report pending any other discussion, staff would recommend approval as presented.
Great, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the audience, so I'm assuming that there's nobody here that wishes to speak. But, so with that, is there any questions for staff? No? Okay, so we'll bring it back to the dais, close the public hearing, and discuss the matter. We know Commissioner Cavney's position.
Just the only one, I mean, I think everything else is fine. These are good amendments. The only one that I have trouble with, I see no benefit to extending the hours. It already extends past a typical workday, so there's plenty of time to get there and get whatever prescription they have. So I don't see a need to extend that. It's average. If you look at the comparisons that were provided last week, we are average at best at worst. And could be more restrictive if we wanted to be, but that's fine.
Okay. Further questions, comments, thoughts, feelings? Anything? Bueller? Bueller? Oh, sorry. Commissioner Muddy? I know. Vice Chairman's got you covered.
I guess I would say that I think that that six to seven hour is, for many people, an important buffer on the backend of the workday. So to me, it would be a little bit more constraining for people to, for those that do seek this relief, to get what they need. And so to me, that six to seven hour is, it's still rush hour for a reason. People are coming home from work during that hour. And so I would, I would want to leave the 7 o'clock as an option.
We could get creative and say 6:30.
Oh, man, please don't muddy the waters sooner than we need to. I will say from my perspective that driving in rush hour traffic, very familiar with that, although I'm not out there buying medical marijuana, hopefully I don't have to ever. But I do, I could understand and appreciate the need for someone maybe driving from Phoenix to Gilbert and needing to get out here, not having, and leaving work at 5 o'clock, not having sufficient enough time to get from work to here and to the place in order to pick up prescriptions that are needed. So I don't necessarily have a concern with the, with the proposed 7 p.m. hour. Vice Chairman? Vice Chairman?
I know it's getting into the weeds, but do we know if you can--
That's a bad pun.
Bad, bad pun. But, can you buy at other locations? Could you buy by your house? Is it like a Walgreens or, I mean, do you have to buy in a certain location? I know we have to design them in certain locations in different chaws that we've learned about, but is it a thing that--
I think you can buy anywhere as long as you have your license, right?
Madam Chairman, Vice Chairman, I believe you are allowed to grow a certain amount on your premises if you've been, I believe there's some kind of permit or license you can get as an individual if you choose not to buy retail. But, other than that, if you have a permit to, you know, use marijuana, you can buy it at any dispensary in the state.
Madam Chair, actually, to be able to cultivate your own, you need to be, I believe, at least 25 miles away from--
Right, from a dispensary.
And it's my understanding, although I haven't researched it recently, that your license to purchase is good at any of the facilities.
Shop Gilbert.
Yeah, it's getting late.
Okay, so, where do we stand? Somebody want to take a shot at this?
Well, maybe we should kind of get a feeling from everybody so we'd know where to go with this. I'm a no.
Okay, seven, six, seven, six. Where do you stand? Six thirty?
Nine o'clock.
9:00 PM or 9:00 AM?
I don't feel strongly one way or the other. Doesn't matter.
I'm a no.
You're a no on the seven or no on the six?
Yeah, 6:00.
You want six? And we know you want seven. And I'm okay with seven.
Why are we entertaining 6:30?
What, oh my--
We're split.
Well, one, two, three, four, five, five to two. I don't see a split.
Oh, I thought there was no opinion down there, so.
Well, I think their opinion is my opinion.
That's a good chairman position.
With lack of opinion. Would you like to make the motion and see if it passes or fails?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, Commissioner Caveney, if I may, I would only add that the proprietor of the medical marijuana dispensary that would be in Gilbert has suggested that a good chunk of his clientele cannot utilize his medical service at 6:00, and that 7:00 would make the difference, for what it's worth.
Prime time, huh?
Okay. I'll try to make it, hold on.
What'd he say, Nave?
Okay, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z 14-15-A, with the exception of A.1, to remain the same.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It could have failed.
It still can.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Still a vote.
Blazer? Nay, or you voted aye?
Aye. Or three?
So, it passes four to three.
Four to three, okay.
All right, moving on to communications, a report from Chairman and members of the Commission on current events. Well, we do have some. Most importantly, our beloved planning commissioner of 14 years, Bridget Peterson, was elected to Town Council in the primary, and we're very happy for her, very sad for us. She's been a longtime devoted member and a good resource for us here on the Commission. And we do have something small to present to her, so if you want to meet me down there? All right, I know this may be a little unexpected, we didn't know if we're going to do this tonight or not, but staff ordered this for you, and it says, "Thank you, Bridget Peterson, for your generous commitment of time and leadership on the planning commission for the Town of Gilbert. The Town of Gilbert is grateful for your outstanding services, Chair, Vice Chair, and zoning officer. Your devoted hours served on committees contributed to our clean, safe, and vibrant community." And that's from June 2000 to September 2014. So, it's been a long ride, and we are so very thankful for you and the example that you've set and all the service that you've given, and not only in the planning commission, but Gilbert leadership, all of the other boards. And I know that the town is very lucky to have you as a council member, and we are thankful, thankful for you. And the one thing that I was thinking of as I was thinking about this is a poem, and I just want to read a snippet of it. It's from Dr. Seuss, "Oh, The Places You Will Go," and it says, "Oh, the places you'll go, you'll be on your way up, you'll be seeing great sights, you'll join the high flyers who soar to high heights. You won't lag behind because you'll have the speed, you'll pass the whole gang, and you'll soon take the lead. Wherever you fly, you'll be the best of the best, wherever you go, you will top all the rest." And so, for that, we thank you. Thank you for your friendship and thank you for your dedication." Does anybody think you want to say?
I don't know if I can. Thank you. Thank you for your friendship. I have, it's been a privilege and an honor to serve. I've only teared up one other time at this commission, or maybe twice, when Michael Monroe left us. And I've learned so much from everyone that I've served with. I've been so lucky to meet so many great people, staff and commissioners along the way. It's really an honor to sit here on this dais, and I look forward to my new role and being able to maybe move to a different seat on the dais, I have no idea, when I get sworn in in January. I can't believe that I've sat here for 14 years and had the privilege to. I've been appointed by three different mayors and many different council members that I can't even probably name all of them. Somebody challenged me a couple of weeks ago to name all of the planning commissioners, and I think I could, but I don't think I could list them in the order that I've served with them over the years. But I've learned something from each and every one of the people that I've served with and every staff member that I've had the privilege to work with. I look forward to working with all of you in a different capacity in the future, and thank you for the time that you give to this commission and the listening that you do to the members of the community and the thought that you put into every decision that you make, and I appreciate that, and just look forward to the future. Thank you.
All right, any additional reports that anybody would like to make? That was the one you had? We covered it? Good.
I'd like to thank you, too, Bridget, personally. My first day here, she met with me before, and I was nervous coming in. She gave me a little bit of advice on just how to be relaxed or how to show up on TV, how to do the pieces of the protocol, and it really helped me get through that first day, even though my first day I was alternate, but I was still on the dais, so it moved quick, so, but I really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Wish I could have met with each and every one of you. I've been a little preoccupied for the past six months. I wish I would have had the time to meet with every single one of the new people over that time, though.
Appreciate you.
We do, too.
There's still time, we can do coffee someday.
Your new chairman will be just fine. All right, with that report, our Agenda Item Number 22 is a report from Council Yason, and I don't believe she's here. She was here for a little while and had to leave. And so, moving on to Agenda Item Number 23, a report from the Planning Services Manager on current events.
Madam Chair, if Linda wants to speak now, she certainly can, but just, I would remind you that we need to return to the last study session item before you adjourn. I don't know how quick your trigger finger is.
Oh, I thought we had to adjourn and then reconvene the study session, no?
We could do that.
Oh, is that work?
We could adjourn, yes, we could do that.
Okay.
I really didn't have anything to add, but since you did recognize Bridget, it's just been a wonderful experience for the community to have Bridget serve as a planning commissioner. We've known each other for quite a few years, all the 14 years that Bridget has served, and many other years, since we both had a home in the same neighborhood for many years. And one thing I will have to say about Bridget that I just really enjoy and admire is that whenever there's a great community event, she's there, and what a wonderful addition to our community to have her as a council member.
Agreed, here, here. All right. With that, we'll adjourn the planning commission meeting and reconvene the study session. And that Agenda Item Number is Agenda Item Number Four in the study session, it's Z 14-15B, an amendment of the Town of Gilbert Land Development Code to amend land use regulation tables in all zoning districts and development regulations and site regulations in all zoning districts, and amend sign regulations and subdivision regulations, and we'll welcome back Mr. Jordan Feld. Poor guy, it's been a long night for you.
No, not at all. Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the Commission. I know you will all be sorely disappointed that there's only three distinct text amendments proposed under Batch B. So, very quickly, we kind of--